You can share that. Mr. Lawton, I think I could probably pull it up on my phones too, but you.
Yeah, it's on.
Breaks, but their breaks are shorter and they don't get the traditional ten to twelve weeks off for summer break. These are example of two modified calendars. You should also have two traditional calendars upfront that you have in comparison, but we've had that calendar for a while with the twelve weeks off in summer. These are some myths and misconceptions that we received from our stakeholders meetings and from input from our teachers in the community. And we took all the questions and kind of categorized them to make sure we were effectively responding to the questions that were asked of us. One is students will attend school more than one hundred and eighty days. Students are required by Mississippi Department of Education through our accreditation process to attend school one hundred and eighty days. That will not change. Our kids will be in school one hundred and eighty days. Much like summer school and intercessions, students will be allowed to come to intercession on a voluntary or prepared request. Teachers will work more than eighty-seven days. That's a myth and misconception. Our students are required from a budgetary standpoint to to work one hundred and eighty-seven days required by Mississippi Department of Education. The reason why it's a misconception is if a teacher chooses to and if there's a need in intercession, they may work additional days, but those days they will be compensated additional pay. Next, it'll cost more money to operate a modified calendar. That's a myth misconception. We will divert our funds that we usually have in summer school to our intercessions so that we can, we'll be able to facilitate those funds as far as tutoring, enrichment, acceleration, and remediation. Another thing I wanted to say about the intercessions, that we also plan to do enrichment and really focus on our magnet school things is something that we haven't been able to do, but we want to focus on that more intentionally. Another thing from a fiscal, another issue with the fiscal part of this is that of course there are going to be unforeseen costs. And because we're in COVID, we, with overhead that we may have to look at, but overall, those funds that we use for summer school would be diverted to our intercessions. One other issue I wanted to bring out in some of the research that we did within district is that most, our summer school attendance is generally attended by two, at least between two hundred and two hundred and fifty students. Meaning that in a district of thirty-four hundred students, we generally only get two hundred and fifty students to attend summer school. Well, where we are academically, we would like more of our students to attend summer school. I feel that the reason why we don't get a lot of attendance in summer school and teacher participation is because in the spring when we start testing season, and if you're a teacher, you understand this, we are burned out by time-based start at the beginning. We are burned out because we have been in testing season and our kids have been inundated with practice tests, grade level instruction, and generally by May, they don't want to go back to school because they've, it's been so rigorous in school. A lot of times our teachers do not want to participate because they're burned out by that time. And that is another support of the modified calendar. It's tough to go from spring break to May in a testing season for students and 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 teachers to start the summer break. So generally it is burnout time by the end of May. The curriculum change, there is no curriculum change. It's set and it's just something that that we are not doing. The data suggests no significant difference. That is a misconception. The learning loss data is extensive with summer breaks. There is definitive research out that shows especially students that are socially and economically disadvantaged that when students lose instruction during the summer between twenty and twelve weeks, that there is significant learning loss, especially if they come to kindergarten unprepared. And I'll, I'll share some of our reading gate scores to show that a lot of our students come to Columbus Municipal School District not prepared for pre-k or kindergarten, and we have to do a lot of remediation to get them on great level. We will not have a Thanksgiving, Christmas or spring break. You should have a copy of the modified calendar. All those breaks are included. That is a myth. Employees will be paid differently. These are all questions from the survey. That is a myth. First-year employees will lose a summer break. That is not a myth. If you look at the current calendar, it starts the second week of June, I think July eighteenth if I recall correctly. And the big adjustment will be next summer because it will seem, it'll seem a lot shorter. So it'll be a whole year before. That change is different from between the time we get out of school and school starts in 2022. Research-based evidence regarding the summer slide, this just talks about learning loss over long periods. If students lose between twenty-five to thirty-five percent of their academic gains that over time, it is, it is the reason why we see such a significant amount of learned loss in third grade. If they come in kindergarten unprepared and they're losing twenty-five percent of the total reading instruction every year, it can, it really details our third grade reading gate scores and what they're losing by not having instruction in the summer. This is a quote from a literacy guru. It's not so much what happens in a single summer, but it's cumulative loss that occurs summer after summer. The most vulnerable kids tend to experience the most significant loss. We talk about enrichment. That's another important part of the intercession is being able to make sure our kids are exposed to cultural art, the arts, music, technology, coding during the year, and then them going right back to grade level instruction with their students. It's a very important aspect of improving student outcomes. We have two videos. I think, if, do you want me to show the videos? Okay, so he's telling me I need to stop.
Alright, so as we're continuing to get some of the technical parts worked out here, with those who are here in person with us, thank you for being here. We greatly appreciate those who would like to come share, comment, question, if you would, to come up to the podium. We'll do it one at a time and and kind of go from there. So who would like to break the ice? And that's kind of a funny thing to say in the week we've had, so. He went up first?
I have a Latarius Barrots Bernardo.
Okay, alright. You said Terrance Bernard. Let's hear it, I'm sorry. Hello, welcome. Good well.
I'm good. I'm the director of the National Office of.
Yeah.
I'll just start over. My name is Latarius Barnado. I serve as the Director of Bands at Columbus Middle School, and I also serve as the Assistant Band Director at Columbus High School. This is my third year serving with the district. First, I do have a question from another staff member who cannot make it here tonight. She just asked me to ask this on the phone. That's Lawanda Butler at Columbus Middle School. She's an English teacher. She says, "Thank you so much for allowing this opportunity to voice my concerns. First, I want to express gratitude for administrative guidance to continue upward progression for the district. However, my concerns about the modified calendar are many teachers take the summer to continue their education full-time. A modified schedule may hinder the process. Also, students whose parents are divorced and share custody may have issues adapting to the modified schedule. I understand adaptability is key to change, but are we changing too much at once?"
If you would, thank you for that. And just possibly let us capture that so that we can answer. And what we'll do is we'll, we'll take one by one, and then after you finish your statements and ask questions, then we'll answer as best we can and then we kind of go from there. If that's okay.
Got you. In my three years with Columbus Municipal School District, I have enjoyed working with our students and seeing their successes. But this calendar does raise some concerns for me. My stance is based on the inconclusiveness of the research, the potential effects on students' lives outside and opportunities outside of school, the detriment it presents to extracurricular retention and participation, and the concerns of myself and other staff members related to student-teacher performance, along with some things that the district has done in the scene in appearance to rush to this approval process. Firstly, I would like to address the research that we've all been talking about. It has been presented as regarding the modified calendar. On the district website, there is an article posted that discusses the summer slide that Dr. Levine has just talked to us about. A phenomenon which students experience significant learning delay over the run of the summer break. I will not argue that this is not a concern, nor will I say that there is no research to support its appearance. However, this article doesn't talk about the fact that slide occurs during all breaks. We have Christmas slide, spring break slide, and even in this year, we have the three days at home with no indirect instruction slide. The modified school calendar doesn't completely alleviate slide. Rather, it seems that the slide is just displaced elsewhere. Now we will have three-week September slide, three-week March slide, and summer slide. I understand that the district's response to this is to have teachers and students come for additional support during the break anyway, something that I want to ask questions about later. The body of research about the modified calendar does indeed seem inconclusive. According to a 2003 article by Cooper Valentine Charlton Nelson, the modified calendar seems to have some positive effects, but the overall results seem significantly statistically minimal at best. Paul T. Von Hippel from the University of Texas at Oscar notes that effects on test scores appear to be neutral at best. He states that although year-round calendars increase summer learning, they reduce learning at other times of year so that the total amount learned over the twelve-month period seems to be no greater than a year-round calendar than under a nine-month calendar. The few research articles that support the calendar mainly cited by organizations with the agenda to promote it seem to be a result of confirmation bias. Most of the organizations that support the calendar instead turn to research that supports the existence of the summer slide rather than the research that addresses the implementation of the calendar as an actual solution to the summer slide. We were also shown an article that says summer exacerbates the divide between the rich and poor. This has been used to support the modified calendar. But beyond the headline, the gap is attributed to a lack of exposure. In other words, more affluent students have access to quality summer programs and camps. A similar article that was shared by a principal among employees provided the same conclusion while adding that more affluent students also travel to places like museums, zoos, aquariums, et cetera, for potential learning opportunities that they don't get at school. So where am I going with this? If we are going to apply the findings of these articles, then we have to consider the proposed causes of the problem. Will the district take steps to provide all students with these interesting quality enrichment opportunities? Are the students going to partake in more frequent off-site learning opportunities once this pandemic is behind us? In the three years I have been here, I can count on one hand the amount of times that students were taken on a field trip. And if I only wanted to include museums, aquariums, and zoos, I might not even get to Star County at all. Maybe the district needs to go beyond cooping our students up in this city. If we are concerned about what our less fortunate students are not going to experience, perhaps we should expose our students to something away from Highway forty-five. Perhaps a science class should go to the Natural Science Museum in Jackson, or the history teacher should let students see the Lorraine Motel in Memphis. Maybe we simply need to create better educational opportunities with what we have before deciding to perform a massive overhaul. Our students have varied interests, talents, and career prospects. Often, students across our state seek additional enrichment based on their specific needs in the form of summer programs or camps. The modified calendar might strip them of these opportunities since most of them often start or end at times that they might still be in school. When I posed a question about this in our stakeholders meeting, the response I received was that students can seek enrichment from our magnet programs. So let's say one of my band students earned an opportunity to attend a program with the nation's finest musicians, or an athlete receives an opportunity to attend a summer training camp with a professional sports organization, or a talented McKellar student was granted an opportunity to attend a summer program at MIT. Do we mean to tell those students that they are, that we are okay with them not going because we have a few magnet programs here at Cell or Cook? We are cooping our students up in the city, and it's not fair to limit their life experiences to Lyons County. Camps for athletes where scouts frequent band or performing art camps which solidify recruiting opportunities for seniors considering co-secondary opportunities in musical or performing arts. And various academic camps take place throughout the summer. A modified calendar may rob them of those opportunities unless there's going to be a massive societal overhaul along with this modified calendar. Now, we might say the students can get travel and exposure opportunities during those intercessions, but the problem is, we were talking about this in relation to student socioeconomic status. If they were too poor to travel in June, they still cannot afford it in September, and they definitely cannot afford to travel during the spring. Many proponents of the calendar say that the intercessions let people travel more often when it's cheaper to travel. The proposed calendar has us offered three weeks in March, and that month, also known as spring break, is often one of the most expensive times to travel in America. But again, that's not even my larger point. If they can't afford to travel, they cannot afford to travel. While we're going into finances, let's backtrack and address one of the major points we've heard a lot. We are not in an agrarian agricultural society anymore. We don't need this data calendar. While it's true that the summers are no longer used for children to bring the fall harvest back to their little houses on the prairie, please remember that, excuse me, that work in the fields has been replaced by work at McDonald's, at Zaxby's, Kroger, and other minimum wage opportunities. Students are still contributing to the home or to their own finances, even if they're not doing it from a farm. Less fortunate households are often dependent upon income from all able-bodied working members of the home. The high school student that tries to work to help pay bills or babysits at home during the summer so the parents can pick up extra shifts or jobs may be placed in spite of fifteen. Jobs may not be willing to hire someone who can only work a few weeks here and there, and even if they do, students will be facing massive pay cuts due to the, to the reduction of hours worked. We can shout from the rafters about how students should not even have to do this or what the parents should be able to do, but this does not change the reality. Also, what about parents in childcare? These more frequent breaks put them in predicaments to find expensive short-term childcare or leave children unattended at home while working. Of course, this issue is not a problem if the children are middle or high school age, but parents are going to face many difficult childcare decisions for the breaks. Not to mention the teachers in our district have children that do not attend this district, or we have a parent of this elsewhere. It may be difficult to make arrangements. The modified calendar seems like it may be helpful, but I feel that it would prove to be a detriment to growth and retention in our programs. Now, while I'm speaking solely from my perspective as a band director, this is not solely a band issue. We have talked, of course, we've had correspondence with band director department. And while they make the schedule work for them, they have also cited issues with attendance at rehearsals and practices. Their head director, Ben Ratliff, also stated that the schedule works for them because they do not attend marching band championships. In other words, they are not trying to be highly competitive organization. The Columbus Band Program has earned the privilege of attending marching band championships two consecutive years starting in 2018. The reason this affects the band's ability to compete is because of the placement of the breaks. The fall and spring intercessions could take place during the weeks leading up to fall marching band competition and spring concert festival in October and April respectively. We would have to require our students to come during these days, and to my understanding, we cannot make anyone come during intercession days. Our students would likely attend any rehearsals necessary to succeed, but that also means they would never get the break that their other classmates are enjoying. The fall and spring intercessions would not be a break for those students or the staff that work with them. Additionally, with schools starting in July and ending in June, that will leave a very short window of time for band and other programs to conduct much-needed summer training camps. These camps would have to happen during the already short summer break and would once again leave our students working while their peers are relaxing. Camps and rehearsals during the longest break of the year would leave our students and staff working all weekend. And many of our band students already have morale issues because the district has not really shown recognition for the achievements they have made, such as making marching band championships. This exhausting year-round practice and work schedule will leave everyone burnt out, frustrated, and overworked. All of this will lead to fewer students participating in activities every year. And if we are truly interested in ensuring that our students are well-rounded scholars rather than simple test takers, we must consider this. The calendar runs a high risk of killing multiple programs, athletic and non-athletic. Students will cease to participate because they will constantly work or practice year-round. Staff will also get burned out because they will work year-round with the one hundred and eighty-eight contract. It is not feasible nor reasonable to ask students to put that much time in with no break whatsoever, especially when they would not be able to take advantage of the same periods of the rest of the students that don't have any extracurricular activities. All that would do is push them to join the same population of students who get the break, and in the long run, our programs will not be able to continue to successfully thrive. One of the major concerns I have heard from staff is the effect that frequent breaks may have on students' ability to focus. While the break is an opportunity to recharge, it is also a time that students who need lots of structure will be away from the school building. It is our concern that we will have a behavioral or we will have to have a behavioral or focus reset after each of these breaks. I'm also going to speak briefly on behalf of my program. Beginning band students need constant intensive direct instruction when they first start. Posture, embouchure, note reading, rhythm, and ear training are all massive undertakings during the first year of any type of musical instruction. And those gaps in time are going to be very, very difficult for their development. We could address these during intercession, but again, is this intercession truly a break or not? Most of the research we've seen states that the success of modified school calendar hinges upon the use of the intercessions for additional interventions, remediations, and enrichments. A point has been made by many of our leaders who are trying to implement this. That is a point that has been made by many of our leaders who are trying to implement this. If we are expected to continue working off-contract, will teachers be allowed to enjoy the break that everyone has said we would get to have? We would have to offer remediation or enrichment to students who are behind and who honestly may not even come. We've already stated that they don't even have adequate summer school participation. At this point, teachers will have to either go home unpaid because no one showed up for their enrichment, or we would have given up our break for no purpose. Having teachers work more days while saying that it's to still seal the same amount just seems like we're getting two hundred and twenty days of work for the one hundred and eighty-eight price. Additionally, it is a well-known fact that teachers in Mississippi are not paid well and often take on other ventures to make ends meet. This is especially true of younger teachers who aim, whose annual salaries are less than thirty-five thousand dollars a year. While what we do off the district clock or the streams of income away from the district are not necessarily a district concern, it should be taken into consideration that students are not the only ones who seek summer employment. This problem along with intercession work and the owner-off sockets of schools may actually lead to the opposite outcome and increased teacher burnout. In all of this, I have been most concerned with the way we have gone about this whole idea for nearly. When we first heard about the calendar, I personally was skeptical but open to the idea. Anything that would potentially help our students is worth, is worth looking at. However, it seems that we have been quick to rush through things. It began with our stakeholders meeting. In this meeting that was held virtually, we were told it would be in open forum to ask questions and express concerns. When the meeting started, we had to mute our mics and type questions in chat, which is a standard practice in all team meetings. However, it became clear the discussion was more about presenting the idea than hearing the discourse. Dr. Childress talked about how to go about implementing the calendar in higher working districts. However, after the presenters briefly skimmed through the many questions that were posted, only a few were answered. Additionally, a follow-up meeting was scheduled for January, but it never occurred. Two days after its cancellation, we were sent an email asking to vote between two different versions of a modified calendar. Afterwards, we've heard articles about how we've had so many stakeholder meetings with overwhelming support, but the support that we've seen seems to be mixed. Some think it may be great, some think it's a bad idea, and some are simply unsure. That does not sound like a seventy percent approval rate. Who have we been talking to? We were told in the, in the meeting that community support in four years' time is necessary to do this. So why are we rushing to push this through when it's clear we don't have either yet? Why were we only told to vote on two versions of the modified calendar? We can't tap that employees and stakeholders chose to do this when we weren't presented the option to, when we weren't presented the option not to participate. In closing, there are many considerations to consider when you all vote on the calendar. While research, research certainly supports the idea of a summer slide, the research regarding the effect of this calendar on that learning outcome is largely inconclusive at best. It also presents difficulties for students and their families. This could potentially kill retention and participation in our programs or force us to sacrifice quality. Additionally, the support for this calendar does not seem strong enough. It is my earnest desire that our leadership will truly consider if this is the best course of action for us. It seems that the outcomes we desire may not be achieved by this, and we should step back and consider the specific needs of our students before we take an action based on these perceived success in another district. Again, if this is something we, the community we serve doesn't want yet, are we going to push it through while completely disregarding them? Please, I implore you to make a decision considering everyone's concerns and everyone's needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing that information and the questions. Doctor, I know, Dr. She might, I took down several different things as well as anyone else, so. So what we'll do is go to the next person, then come back, and then we'll circle back around to yours and then address all of them at once, if that's okay. That way, we cut down on the redundancy if someone else has a similar question. And also, we have about a hundred and twenty-five individuals who are following along with us on YouTube, Facebook as well that are posting questions. So once we go through everyone who's here present with us, then I'll start going through those questions as well. So we'll answer all the questions posed here, and then we'll go to that platform to share. So thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you.
And one thing I will say is, I was listening as tightly as I could. I know like I was multitasking, but if there's something that was missed, as we're going through it, it's not, that we're trying not to answer, feel free that as we go through it to say, hey, I know you may have missed this, but if that's okay. Alright. Alright.
Ms. Townsend?
Ms. Townsend? Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Deja Townsend. I am the librarian slash second-grade teacher, slash school testing coordinator slash fixed asset coordinator. That's how I'm this year. I was a fourth-grade teacher last year, so. I am so thankful for your statement and what you said. You pretty much covered many of my concerns. I do want to front load by saying I am not against the modified calendar, the calendar, but I am against it for the twenty-one and twenty-two school year. I do feel like we're in a rush to respond and jump into action. I think we do need more time to get people on board and committed to it. I myself, not what about people with a custody issue. I am a parent with a custody issue with three kids in DeSoto County. It's been a hard year for us. We've had to lose some of those weekends that we normally get, so we were really looking forward to the summer. So now we have to rearrange how summer would work, which would drastically affect my family and my children. Tired is beyond what I am this year. One day in a meeting with my principal, I told her I thought about three. That's how tired I am. I can't speak for everybody else, but that's how tired I am. I have a three-year-old twin that I go home to exhausted. I have an eight-year-old who is virtual that I go home to exhausted. So after I teach second grade virtually, and I now have a hybrid group since January, I have to go home and teach my own child. So when we say it's good for everyone, we have to consider the people who are in the trenches, in the classroom every day. It is mentally exhausting. It is physically exhausting. This year I have been put on blood pressure medication. Never had it before. This year I have been placed on anxiety medication. Never had those issues before. This is not just a pandemic issue. This is a mental health crisis. And I'm telling you from the. And I'm telling you from the teachers I have spoken to, they are tired. And many of them expressed that they're interested in the modified schedule, just not this school year. I can't speak for everyone. But if I'm left with an option, I can't honestly say that if we go to this modified school district, school schedule will cover. I can stay here because my body is tired, my mind is tired. And if you know me, when I'm in the classroom, I'm a hundred percent committed to my children. I wear those hats proudly, but this year I'm exhausted. Christmas break felt like maybe a fall break. Those two weeks went by like three days. So to say get out of school in May, I have three children, I take on three more two weeks in June. Can you imagine? From the range of sixteen to four by May, six children running around the house, I get two weeks. I send my three to Greening for break, I get six children again. And then those last two weeks, I get to recharge my battery and start thinking about how I'm going to approach the next school year in August. To go from out of school in May, you get June, and you hop right back in and you lie. That's gonna be hard for a lot of people, and I assure you all, please, consider our plea with you all. We didn't have an option to truly vote if we wanted a modified calendar or traditional calendar. We had an option to vote on two different modified calendars, so did we really have a choice? We weren't truly presented with an option. So I thank you all for presenting us with this traditional calendar and both the modified calendar. But consider the people who are in the trenches. We have some shortages in the district already as far as teachers are concerned. Have you considered what shortages may occur if we do adopt this modified schedule? I have served as a fourth grade teacher because of a teacher shortage. I am serving as a second grade teacher because of a teacher shortage. I have gone from a second grade teacher with a lead teacher to kind of guide me. To now I'm the second grade lead teacher because things happen. So I please ask you all to consider us. We are the ones in the trenches. We are the ones carrying the emotional burdens of those students. We are the ones carrying the emotional burden for workers who are losing family members due to COVID. We are the ones standing in those trenches every day. And we need our full break to recharge, spend real quality time with our own families without going there being completely defeated. Because most days I am. I have to go in my room and tell my husband, I just need thirty minutes. And a three-year-old should know mommy just needs her mommy time right now. But they do, mommy needs mommy time. Because that's just how tired I am. Because when you carry that, energy is transferred. And after you carry that load all day, if you don't go unload it and release, it transferred to your to your family. And none of our families deserve to receive that energy, so I ask you to please give us the time to recharge. Able the modified calendar until the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Where I think a lot more teachers will be on board with adopting this calendar. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Townsend, for sharing with us. And just as I explained earlier, we'll come back around to your concerns and any questions to address those if we can. Thank you. Next, we have signed up.
Ms. Henry?
Ms. Henry? Thank you very much, Ms. Henry. You can come on down.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I would just like to say that I am a graduate. I've been here in Columbus pretty much all of my life. My children attend the high school here, they're in the band here, Columbus High. My children have been straight A students since they have been at this district. My children used to be in a gifted program. All the way up to they were in middle school. And they truly enjoyed the gifted program at the end. My children were devastated when the district lost funding for the gifted program. Their teacher that they had decided to go over to Heritage because she didn't want to teach. Just anything she wanted, and I'm not mad at her for that. Now, I do agree that something does need to be done, of course, to help children. But me as a parent, I feel like maybe the modify might be too soon. I do have, I did listen the week before on YouTube where he said, but when, but when, but when, but when? Yes, something does need does need to be done. I'm just not so sure as of right now. I looked at the modified B that you actually have. Versus, yeah, beef. And I'm trying to see what is the difference between the traditional beef and the modified that you have? There's three calories that are beef. That was my first question. I was trying to get these months together. One concern that my children have is being far as that this district is concerned. We're at that point where we kind of are thinking about pre-med and things like that. But being on the schedule that that the district is actually in, they are under the same, they can't do McKellum. If you're in band because you're on a block schedule. And that's sad that my children have to make a choice, even though that they are there academically. Where they cannot do McKellum because it conflicts with something else that they're interested in. My children have been advanced since they were in the sixth grade. We're now sophomores now. That's number one. Number two, for me and my husband, we're fortunate. We take our children spring break, we take them in summertime. We are a functioning family where we actually do vacation. This is the time, me and my husband, we both, we work full-time. We take our children to different spots, not just Columbus. We are a traveling family. So my thing is, for me, my children are getting ready to leave home in a minute. And once they leave home, that's pretty much it for us as far as vacation time. Anything that me and my husband have instilled in them, we hope that it continues with them once they leave our house. But I don't think that it is fair that you make the children go to school year-round. You know, we were on, we had a meeting for the band, we were talking about, let's just say September, let's say September, October, November, December. And there is football going on. The baby is expected to play. If the children are expected to play, when do they get a break? When will they get a break? And it's not fair that their other friends are taking their break at this particular time, and they don't get it. They might get maybe a week. That's not enough time for my children to recharge. They enjoy being in this district. They enjoy band. And we have no complaints as far as that is concerned. But we're at that point where being on a block schedule, it doesn't work for my children. Because they are, they they they're they're straight A students. You know, and for them to make a choice between giving up band and giving up McKellum, I mean, really? They shouldn't have to do that. So the block schedule does not work for us at the high school at all. So I do agree that the district needs to do something else. And then also, a lot of the times when I was in school, we had extra clubs that we could do. Effie with Konya, or whether it's checkers or chess or whatever kind of club, we don't have those clubs anymore. Things that actually teach our children of that there's no need for our children to be educated. And they can't talk to anybody because they have no social skills. I feel like some of the programs that the district used to have need to come back. Because they're they're just gone. They're gone. I took part in cheerleading, track, and yes, we do have those type things there. But a lot of the programs that we have, they're not there anymore. So the children are still lacking on the social part. That's my perspective from being a parent here with the district. I just think some things just need to be done. Why not improve some of the things that we have already for the children? Throw more money, such as like I said, the the gifted programming, it only goes up to a certain age and that that was it. And that was sad because one example, my children, when they were in the gifted program, they actually learned to write in curses. And to ask them, some of their friends, can y'all write in curses? They cannot, but my gifted teacher taught them how to. And then I later perfected what she left off for them. So my thing is, where's the funding for these programs we used to have? We don't have them anymore. That that's just my perspective from me just being a parent here. Like I said, we are a traveling family, we do things with our children. We are fortunate and blessed enough that we can afford to do whatever our children want to do. I can't say that for everybody's children, but my two definitely. And there's just no limit that me and my husband will go to make sure they have the best of whatever they decide to do in life, period. But my only thing is, can we just please, please maybe improve what we have? And bring back some other programs that we don't have anymore versus just making them go to school year-round? Because I really haven't heard anything about what other programs are there. Some people do STEM in the summertime. My children take advantage of camp. I hadn't heard anything about any really any other program other than summer program. That the district has offered a couple of times, and that's been basically it. You know, so what else is there for the Columbus School District for the children? Other than summer school? And what does that consist of? I have no idea. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing with us, Ms. Henry. This one? That's all the signed up? Alright, is there anyone else who may have not signed up that would like to speak? Okay, alright, so before we go to the online comments, let us go back to. Mr. Bernard, I want to make sure I say it correctly. Sorry if I messed it up. Concerns about going all year long. Of course, you know, the research there, you know, is a slide of summer that we are working to overcome. And if we space those times out throughout the year, that that particular slide will just become more prevalent in other parts of the year. Also, shared custody, I know that's a couple of different comments that were put forward. Camps and other extracurricular activities and of course being paid for a break, and is it really a break? And that's just some of the ones that I took down. The Doctor Schumay and Doctor Bot may have taken down others, but. You know, certainly Doctor Bot, if you want to to share on some of those different topics. And I know I, you know, anyone else board members that would like to share regarding some of the comments or questions.
So I'm gonna have Mr. Spears to go through each one. And then I'll go through them one by one, and then I'll add if anything else is needed, and then if it doesn't, if it's not clear. If it's not clear what our my response is, or if it's not answering your question, please just clarify by coming back to me.
Okay, so let's let's start with one of the first, excuse me. One of the first things is some of the teachers or staff take the summertime to complete their education.
Yes, I I did write that down. And I know that a lot of the master's programs are also online. And generally in the evening, and I understand the limitations of that. But I think in pursuing even, you know, my my postgraduate degree that I had to make, you know, changes. Depending on what classes were offered. So as far as the summer, especially this summer, I also wanted to say that. There will only be a two or three week difference from when we would start our traditional calendar between in between the modified calendar. As far as a summer higher education and it being online, you know, there's, I have no response to that other than. That that would be something that'd be difficult and that most of the courses I know in post-secondary education are online or hybrid courses. And they have the option for them to be online. And that's the best way I can answer that for post-secondary. And we still, we do want our teachers to go to master's degree, so we definitely don't want to deter that.
Okay. Then the, and this was also shared by Ms. Townsend as well regarding those who have custody arrangements with their children. How how would, how do we see that being worked out through this proposal?
I think I've heard pros and cons of that, you know, I've heard people that say this is more accommodating for custody issue. And so, like, you know, I've had a parent to say, you know, I'll be able to see my children more. Because I generally only get them in the summer and I can see them more times during the year. So I just feel that there is pros and cons to custody issues. And I know this is difficult for some people that have it during a specific time. But, you know, I I think overall as parents, and I'm a child of divorced parents. That, you know, when it comes to accommodation, parents try to do the best for their children, especially as it relates to them accommodating them with their school calendar and school days.
Now, certainly, we could get into the research, and I've read through research that certainly has been presented. With respect to the modified calendar and support of it, but I've also read, I've been sent multiple articles, multiple other studies that have been conducted. I think one that you had referenced about the University of Texas, I've also, now I can't say that I've gone through it as as well as I probably beat to. I don't necessarily get all the nomenclature a lot of times, but I tried my hardest. But I would I would just say that instead of getting into the research contrasting back and forth, I mean, that's obviously up to more, you know, opinion of. You know, who supports and how the article and opinion was written. So certainly so focusing on student achievement in this district, we certainly want to focus more on the questions like you've asked about. Custody arrangements or, you know, teachers being tired and other things than trying to see which research article may be more relevant than another. I would hope that would be okay with everyone instead of comparing and contrasting, that we focus on on those other questions that.
And I would say with the modified calendar, it's starting to take more weight right in the United States because of COVID nineteen. I feel that there's not enough research on modified calendar. I think there'll be substantial more research, but there is significant research regarding learning loss. So I think that's more of a support narrative, it relates to release research of the modified calendar. Modified calendar research information, because there's not a lot of research out there.
Alright, so next, discussed whether it be band camps, athletic camps that students go to. Also, other extracurricular activity that tend to occur during the summer. Outside of say when they can participate in say the spring or in the fall. What are some of the differences with respect to the proposed modified calendar? Or how would that be addressed for students who may need that time to, just like other districts that may be able to send their students to cheer camp? Or or band camp or something during the summertime when our students, if the calendar is adopted, will be in school during those periods of time, say July or August? To be able to take part.
I would first like to say that during the summer break, when generally kids are in band camp or football camp. Their their peers are on break and they're they're practicing in the summer. And I I feel like it would be no different than than the intercessions during the year. We did get extensive feedback from our athletic department and an overwhelming support of all the athletic programs for the modified calendar. It's been a reoccurring question. It happened during our first initial meeting with current. And again, during the stakeholders meeting, which we responded online. And so we've gotten several questions, it was a major question for Brent. And a question at the Senate Committee meeting about athletics. So those accommodations have been been made and the students have in other districts. And current district have made accommodations, but I think more importantly than is that our athletic department has sent the letter, has given us feedback. Gave us a lot more pros and cons when the board has received that letter detailing how they feel that it was. The board has received that letter detailing how they feel that it would be beneficial in support of student achievement and feel that it would enhance their athletic programs. And and they they the pros outweigh the cons and the board has that letter and the information in their resources.
Now, one other thing, just, you know, certainly that happened during the school year that I've noticed this year, I know the board has noticed, is, you know, for example, we'll just take football. If the football team has a game in Soto County for a bus ride, you can't wait to get out of school. You have to leave early to go to that particular competition, whether it be going to Jackson or somewhere along that line. So I know that certain accommodations are made, whether it be for a team cheering or whatever, in order for them to be able to go to those events and participate or compete as well. And I would I would think, and certainly it's up to you, Dr. Bot, to share more regarding the fact is that should camp, if if the modified calendar were to be selected for those students who do participate in those athletic activities or academic or whatever other extracurricular activity it may be, that those accommodations would be afforded the same so that they wouldn't be missing out on opportunities to get in front of those particular individuals who might be looking to offer scholarships for those particular performances or competitions.
And my response to that is that we would never hold any of our students back from an athletic opportunity or an enrichment opportunity such as girl state or the governor's school if we were on a traditional or modified calendar. It's just something we wouldn't do. Anything that's gonna enhance their ability to be college career or less than prepared, we're asking.
Okay. And the last thing I have written down here or under that particular presenter is paid for break and of course, is it really considered a break? If during those intercession periods, teachers are signing up or participating to be available to assist the students during those periods of time?
And my answer to that is it's totally voluntary. We can't force you to work. So if you want to take the whole three weeks off, much like summer school, you don't have to work. And so it would only be teachers that are willing and want to work during those intercessions. So it's totally voluntary. You would not be expected to work unless you wanted to. And that's how we do summer school. We recruit. We get students, teachers that are interested in making the extra money. We make sure that they can teach the enrichment or the academic courses that we're providing. And we're very specific about what we want as far as the programming that we've done in the summer. And so just know that it's totally voluntary. If you're a teacher and you would like to have a three week soft call, choose not to work during a time you don't have to. Same thing with the the spring intercession. It's totally voluntary.
And the one clarification from the board level or from me, for example, is that when a contract is approved, it is approved for X amount of staff or the level that, educational level that a teacher or administrator is employed at under that contract. And that breaks down, if you take that and divide by the amount of days they are authorized to work, 187 or 230, whatever that number is, gives you a per day amount for that contract as far as the value of the contract. And so my my question is, if a teacher were to say, okay, I want to work here in October, or I want to work here in this time in the spring, their pay for each day they work during that period of time would equate to the pay amount that they receive under the contract? Or they'd be paid less or what would the amount be?
No, we can't afford that. We usually give a specified salary. It's generally between $25 and $30 an hour, depending on the program and the federal funds available. And so that's our our rate of pay for summer school for for teachers.
Alright, is there any other benefits that are also paid along with that additional contract, off-contract work?
That is added to your salary and your retirement per per year salary that goes into PERS. So if you made an extra $5,000 during an intercession, that goes through your salary PERS as your retirement as your your top three to four years. It's counted with all all benefits, all retirement benefits.
Thank you very much. And that's all that I had listed down. Dr. Shoemake, is there anything that you may have also listened to, Dr. Bot, to break up?
These weren't really questions, but I'm just gonna bring them up because I think they were concerns. The effect of the shortened summer break on, or the the way the breaks are spread out on working during the summer. That might be seen as a problem for some of the students who would not be coming to intercessions. If they had the longer break, they would be able to work, well, longer more. They might be more attracted to employers. That's that's just one concern that that I thought was brought up. And then there was also a concern that was brought up about expensive, short-term childcare. I'm not sure if that's exactly right, but that that was sort of something that was mentioned as a possible concern. The other thing that I got was, and this related, I think specifically, and nobody had answered, to band and the problem of when the competition is, I believe in Octo, or April and October, the competition may coincide with some of the planned breaks.
Dr. Shoemake? We we have a, we have several students that work during the year in town. It has been, I would say, a crisis during the pandemic because a lot of them have chosen to work and drop out of school. And so we're very concerned about that because to young people, sometimes the short-term gains of a of a job is more important than school. We we have addressed that. It is it's a concern. We also understand the significance of our students contributing to their their household income. But I I feel like the the best way to address that is that if they only have six to seven weeks during the summer, they they'll have three weeks in October to work. And they're not gonna have less time to work. They'll just be working at a different time. And I think that's something that we have to realize that we're not taking any days away from teachers and we're not taking any days away from students. They will still have the opportunity during spring break or during the first or second intercession to work full-time in order to supplement those funds. And so just just remember that as we're doing that with teachers, we're not taking away any days. We're just balancing the calendar to have more frequent breaks. Our students that work in the summer, if they work seven, six or seven weeks in the summer and go back to school, they'll have three weeks to work full-time in October before Christmas. Just like our teachers will have an opportunity if if they're selected to be able to work during an intercession before Christmas break for extra money. So nothing is getting taken away. It's just getting redistributed. Second question? Well, and then that was another thing that we felt was very relevant during this time. We we did have some of our faith-based daycare providers in our first stakeholders meeting. And everybody we've talked to from the Y N C A to the Boys and Girls Club to Parks and Recreation. And much like the daycare center will accommodate our schedule based on need. So we feel that there will be care for our our students and teachers and parents during that time. The expensive of childcare, childcare is expensive. I mean, it hadn't, that has has not changed. I just think that during this time, during the pandemic, we've made accommodations. And that is another reason why we felt like this would be a good time, because we are on a hybrid schedule. People have made accommodation. People have sitters. People have had people in daycare. They have people that are watching their kids or supervising their children during this time. So the ideal time for us to, I feel as a district and a CMSD family, to get back into routine, if we can ever get out of like wearing these masks, right? And get back into a regular schedule and feel that we could go to this. We felt that 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 would be a time that we want some sense of normalcy in our lives and may not ever, ever consider a modified calendar. It seems likely that we may want to do that, but you know, doing anything normal, I think we would all grasp for it at at that time, two years from now or a year from now. So the ideal is, it was never meant to be rushed as much as the crisis, what we're dealing with student achievement, our district being on a hybrid schedule, what we're seeing academically with the dropout rate, things in the community. Our students' need for socialization, our our need for teachers to have breaks because that's important for SEO. And us making accommodations now for our children that we've never had to make before because our kids are only going to school on maximum of two days a week. We've already made the accommodations. We've already had to make some of the transitions that are needed with daycare and relatives to support the children. So we felt like this was the ideal time for the Columbus Municipal School District family. And with band competition, like I said before, we would never do anything not to support our students in enrichment, whether it was extracurricular or academics. That's what schooling is about and it's an important aspect of the development of our students. I I did hear something about enrichment as they're related to socioeconomic status. And I just wanted to make sure that we clearly defined that enrichment is not only field trips, it's project-based learning, it's coding, some of the other things that we've done in in the district to try to support learning. But our magnet school choice is in 21st century schools, so it's just not summer field trips. And I also wanted to say, our our teachers are doing a lot of great things, a lot of exploratory learning. And the more creative our teachers in in wanting to do those things like field trip, we 100% support that. And we continue to fundraise to make sure our students have the funds to be able to do those programs. So that would never be a problem, but what a school or a teacher does as it relates to exploratory learning is all up to the creativity of the teacher. There's never been a field trip request or a exploratory learning to a a science or facility out of state, or whether it's in Alabama or athletic trip in New Orleans that's come across my desk in the last two and a half years that I've declined. If the if the if the vision is there and it's going to enrich our students, we support it. I did hear some things about the block schedule versus the seven-period day. And I would just ask that parent just to address that with Mr. Chapman or to speak to us about that at another time. And I do understand the differences and the inability to make choices on the block schedule because a student only has a selection of four four courses during the day. I I did hear this stuff, I'm sorry.
No, I I was gonna say, I want to make sure the first presenter that we went through all of these different things, and I'll mention it, come back to that at the end. So just make a note if if that's the case. Ms. Townsend presented regarding custody issues and, you know, how to work through those, having the time if need be to certainly work through those and consideration in the 2022, 2023. But then, you know, also about, you know, staff, teachers, with all the things that have kind of been thrust upon them and of course, the school district and the children and everything, besides moving too fast, but, you know, that they're tired and, you know, how, you know, how is this calendar, if elected to do, going to help alleviate some of that mental distress? And also things, you know, just being tired, of course, through that. So could you address that particular point?
Yes, and I I wanted to say that the Gulfport School District adopted the modified calendar about two weeks ago. And one of the main reasons that he wanted to adopt the calendar is for the mental breaks. I think that us having a 11-week summer, I think coming back because I I think we are going to be in these masks for another year and a half. I think the stress level and anxiety is going to be there. I don't think we have a balanced calendar with the traditional calendar. And I think when we, if we have more balanced breaks during the year, that it would be better for our teachers mentally than going the long period of time and waiting for Thanksgiving and Christmas break, especially in the fall. And I also feel with assessments coming up, this year, the assessments won't be in the accountability model. But I think when we go full-fledged next year and they expect us to be in school all day and we have testing and we have to deal with the anxiety of what we deal with every day with educators academically, I think the stress level is gonna be a lot different and I think it's gonna be more pervasive. And so I feel like, we may not feel it now, but we will appreciate a three-week break in the fall and a two-week break during spring break. I think a lot of the time accommodations that Deja spoke about, this summer, the summer will only be shortened by two and a half weeks than the normal schedule when teachers would return. And I think the big adjustment will be next year. That's one thing we did think about. Next year, it will seem shorter. So the 22-school year will seem shorter, but this year it will not seem as as the only difference will be about two and a half weeks as opposed to how long we would be out on a traditional calendar.
Okay. Then going to, let's see, I want to make sure I didn't miss something. Students starting next year shortage of of teachers, should the district go forward with the modified calendar?
You know, and that was one of the questions I asked Dr. Children from Corin about some of the the teachers moving forward based on the calendar. That's very understandable, especially if people have custody issues. But I do feel like slowly but surely, the whole state will move towards a modified calendar with some of the things we're dealing with academically as far as the achievement gap throughout the state, especially for the school districts that have been hybrid or virtual. There will be, have to be some kind of mitigation to catch our students up. Whether you know it or not, this March, we've been out of school for an entire year and our kids have only been in school for two days. That is going to have a significant impact on our community. It's gonna have a significant difference on us academically. It's gonna have a significant difference in our college and career preparation. And we're gonna have to work double time or to mitigate the situation. You know, the best way I can tell you as a community, we can get out of this in three to five years. We can get out of this in five to seven years. And we have to be proactive in making decisions for our students. I know that everybody is tired. We've been through a lot. I mean, this has been a trying time. And I can begin to understand, I mean, listening to Deja, knowing how hard she's worked at Fairview to do to do her job. She talked extensively about her family. I think we all have an element of that. I am Deja, even though I'm a superintendent. It is, it is, it has been tough. It has been hard. It has been difficult. And, you know, I I told the principals this, I I don't think we're gonna get any breaks next year with the accountability model. I think they're gonna expect our third graders to read, even though they hadn't taken an assessment for two years, they've been there for two days. I think they're gonna expect our kids to pass the test or they're not gonna graduate. And I don't want to be on the back end with a 65% graduation rate. Half of our kids not passing the third grade reading gate and us thinking about making this decision today and we didn't think about what was in the best interest of students. So I want to tell you that I empathize tremendously with what we're going through as a district. I don't think it's a teacher in America or the world that is not experiencing what Deja is feeling and what we're feeling about where we are now. And I know it's tough, but just know this modified calendar is not taking anything away from you more than it is redistributing the days that we go to work with the interest of the teacher having more breaks during the year.
Okay. Now we go to comments and questions Ms. Henry posed to us. And I want to make sure, I know some of the comments are regarding the modified calendar and different things as far as differences, and some were, you know, more programmatic and and everything about the gifted program and loss of funding in those programs. And so certainly in the block scheduling, those, you know, different things are very important. And I appreciate you sharing that with us so that as Dr. Bot can review that and and bring back suggestions of, you know, what needs to be done to kickstart those or why they would discontinue those different things. If that would be something, those those parts I want to share are.
To receive your question on a gifted program, some of those things are not about funding, but the levels that gifted stopped it, stopped from the state level. There has been legis, there was legislation that was put in front of legislators last year about re, by putting those gifted programs back in. But they didn't feel like it was appropriate during during the pandemic. And so a lot of, some of the things you're talking about are more state regs and not local decisions that were made were programming, programming from the state level as far as when gifted starts and when it ends. And some of the other questions, if you like to make an appointment, it's often via Mr. Chapman. I can go through them extensively. But they're not not related to the modified calendar.
Yeah, if you do that, then you can bring back to the board some of those different suggestions on that part. And was it imagination destination or something that, that I remember a program like that? Was it imagination destination or something that, that I remember a program like that? I mean, it's been a few years back. Um, I think Ms. Collins may have taught it or gone to national, nationals and different. Yes, yes, that was part of Dr. Bot, but I think those are some of the programs I remember. I don't know if those are the exact ones being spoken about, but if you would just. Put details together and come back and share. Um, and of course, you know, why students can't, you know, have to choose and can't do McKellar. You know, those are also very relevant details.
And I wanna say that's also an issue with athletics in McKellar. You know, be on the block schedule, so those are things that we know are issued with the block schedule. But the block schedule really is to support um, the graduation rate, give them a longer time to be able to take courses. Um, and take additional courses with dual enrollment and has been a benefit throughout the state and most, most districts are on the block schedule. Because of graduation and dual enrollment and giving students a, a longer, uh, more opportunities to complete their graduation requirements.
Okay, um, and then one of the key points is, you know, need to bring back different clubs for socialization and. Other support and, and, you know, activities throughout the district as well. And I know that's something that we have had some discussion about and, and still, you know, working out with, you know, certainly COVID and the way schools operate now. Actually being able to renew those types of programs, but certainly would like to hear more. About what programs once existed here that people found so much enjoyment in being a part of. That might be something that could also be entertained as to how they can be incorporated back into the school system.
And I wanted to say our teachers are doing a great job. I, you know, I know at Fairview, we've done a lot of things with the sciences and with technologies to improve. Um, and our clubs and the extension of our enrichment is, is really contingent on our teachers and their creativity. You know, there's, there's not anything that you, you all bring to me that's an enrichment that, um, that I deny, you know, uh, that we wanna support those programs. Uh, we wanna get back to our magnet school, um, things, you know. Redefine our make of the 21st century, be able to offer um, those opportunities for our students, but. Uh, we, we definitely support the creativity of our teachers in developing those programs. And we try not to do them from down up, you know, we, we did uh, do so with the coding, but the other ones, we really wanna. Support the creativity of our teachers in, in um, establishing these original programs and after-school clubs.
Thank you. Now, at this particular point, um, I'm, we have quite a few uh, individuals who are on the live. Uh, Facebook Live with us that are posting questions and, and comments and so first I'll make sure I go through and get as many. Or try to get all the questions that are listed here. Um, so Ms. Amber J.
Would you like to go ahead and give these three people first, Mr. Fier?
Uh, let me do some of these and I won't do them all. I'll do some of them and then that way everybody's being interactive with and then we'll, we'll come to those individuals. Thank you very much. So Amber J online uh, states, how much will teachers make who choose to teach during intercession?
Generally in summer school, um, and like I said, this is contingent on budget. It's twenty-five dollars an hour um, for teachers. Um, generally in the summer, they work four to, four hours a day. Um, the intercession programming has not began because we were waiting on it. The decision of the Board of Trustees and so that would be contingent on budget, but generally a certified teacher salary is twenty-five dollars an hour.
Okay, um, and then to, the second part, her question is, will they get? A choice of which portions of the intercessions they want to teach?
Uh, in doing our programming, our preliminary program with, with principals. That'd be contingent on if it's a week program, a two-week program, if it's an academic program. Um, is it a coding or technology program? And so we would want that teacher that's in that specific program to be able to facilitate that need from beginning to end, so. Let's just say we did an animation program like with our Wonder Media. If it's a two-week program, we would expect that teacher to commit to two weeks. Um, of, of instruction with Wonder Media. Similarly, if we had a remediation or acceleration in ELA or math. Um, specifically at, at, at different grade levels, if you did third grade, we expect you to be there the whole time. But that's part of our recruitment process. Um, we do the same thing with summer school. When we hire summer school teachers, the commitment is for the entire summer. We specify the number of hours, the commitment, the grade level. And so those directions will be given prior to our planning and programming um, based on the commitment. Like I said, that is completely voluntary. And if a teacher cannot commit to that, then they, then they don't have to do the intercessions. Much like if they um, would not like to do summer school, they don't have to do summer school.
Okay, and I'm just scrolling through to find questions that are posed. And then we'll go back and share some of the comments that are also being stated on this platform. All right, now I think this is kind of a statement question, but uh, Ms. Jamie Mercer states. Um, this eliminates the opportunity for students to hone their skills, to receive scholarships. And to represent the CMSD at these programs. I'm not sure if that's really talking about participating in band competitions or academic other types of extracurricular. Uh, but what would you say as far as? Those students losing the opportunity to continue to perfect their skills or participate and compete against others for scholarship money or any other? Um, types of, of awards they might receive?
Um, and I know it's hard to text on, online, but um, I, I don't feel I have enough detail to answer the question, but I can assure you. That if our student has an enrichment opportunity, that them having a three-week break in the spring, in the fall, a two-week break in the spring would not hinder that process. Um, we are a academic achieving institution. We want ours to see our students excel and the district would not do anything to hinder. An opportunity for a student to receive a scholarship and or have an opportunity to attend girls, boys state, the governor's school. Or anything that would enhance their um, capability of leaving our school district college career or a listening prepared.
Okay, um, a question comment from A. Jordan. Why a three-week break? Why not give week breaks in September and February to give teachers and students a break?
Um, we looked at uh, the research and the forty-five fifteen method remediation, um. Specifically some of the i-ready um, data that I just discussed earlier when the meeting began. Um, student D specific amount of intervals as far as instruction is concerned. In order to um, um, obtain academic gains and so. We felt the forty-five fifteen method was the best method for our school calendar and for the testing calendar. That's another thing that's driven into this is when we assess. It's another reason why we have two weeks, that two weeks and then the spring break and, um, the spring session, we got that. Uh, influence from the Corin School District. And so um, I'll, uh, a lot of this is contingent on the uh, testing calendar, the state testing calendar.
And just, you know, one question I have in, in reading that particular comment question. Is, the effort is to cut down on the summer slot. And so to that point, it's a, instead of one, three-week break here and through, and I know a lot of it deals with. Your school, children only in school so many days a year. And then of course, teachers are under contract for so many days a year and then. The intercession periods, the three weeks is where you're trying to do additional. Intensive, um, you know, intervention or you're trying to share and, and continue to contribute to the child's learning. And you have to have high participation rate in order for that to happen. So is there a calendar in this, in a modified sense? That would have shorter breaks but be spaced out month to month and still accomplish the same goal instead of. Either you get it all in the summer or you're getting it in the spring and, and the fall to where it's more of like a, a. You go to school for five weeks and then you're off for a week and you go to school for five weeks and it just breaks it up instead of big clumps through the year. Cause I know that was something that was shared earlier by the first presenter about. Now you're gonna see it become prevalent throughout the different times of the year if you have these big blocks of three weeks throughout, so. What would you say to that?
Um, the complexity of trying to get the hundred eighty days of instruction and then the hundred eighty-seven contract days. Was contingent, like I said, on the assessment calendar from the Mississippi Department of Education. And secondly, us continuing to have the holidays that our teachers and employees are accustomed to. So if you look at that calendar, are, we still have all the same holidays and so. Making that hundred eighty and hundred eighty-seven day work with the assessment calendar. And continuing our break to keep, to keep a sense of normalcy is the reason why the forty-five fifteen method works. And it's more effective as far as what were you seeing? And was the second part of that question?
Um, it, it's, the second part was just more along the lines and that was more, I, my assertion from what I had just read to you is the question comment is. Instead of having a big block in the summer that people, that you're looking for under the modified calendar to eliminate. And then the concern is, well, if you start having big blocks of time instead of just in the summer, now you're gonna have some in the fall and you're gonna have some in the spring. Is there a more, even, I don't call it more balanced effort to where. You come to school and you rotate for so many weeks and then you're off, rotate so many weeks off and you're still getting. High participation without having just three weeks in the fall, three weeks in the spring or three, four, six weeks in the summer.
Okay, and I, uh, and that goes back to the assessment, keeping the current holidays, a hundred eighty. And hundred eighty-seven days uh, within the balanced calendar. Um, also a big consideration is. The spring intercession as relates to the testing calendar, where we begin the testing season, especially for third grade gate. And for um, the, the end of the year math assessment. I will say that we did a trial with Columbus High School and did a one-week intercession for students for credit recovery. Kind of a catch-up time for C-time, um, and that was the fact that we had a hundred students to attend that in December. Um, I think that that was a great indicator because generally during spring break. I mean, during summer school, we generally only have two hundred students district-wide to participate. And so we're hoping that with the more frequent breaks, that we'll be able to recruit more students to attend during um, the school year. Cause generally um, at the end of May, our teachers are very burned out from assessment and test preparation. Our students are at the epitome of their academic um, um, grade level instruction. They take an assessment. And generally they're burned out, so generally we don't have students to attend summer school. And we generally don't have high levels of participation for summer school. We don't have teachers that are really, really to wanna do summer school and that's understandable.
Okay, uh, another question, um, Patricia Fields asked says, I sent, I spend more time. Operating as a test coordinator than being a Spanish teacher. Will the amount of testing be cut back or will there still be testing or still, will there's, we still be testing two weeks out of every night?
I think, um, that's a very, very good question. Um. Uh, all I can say is that we, we have to continue to get data to make sure that we're effectively um, adjusting our instruction to meet. The grade level standards for our students. Um, you know, cutting down testing um. Outside of our state testing, we, those benchmarks are very important assessments. Um, it's something that we have looked at, um, you know, especially during this time. Um, evaluating over-testing students. It, it is a very sensitive topic for me. Um, as it relates to students and for teachers. And I, I, I would just like to respond to that, that, that that is being evaluated. But I can also say that as we improve student achievement in the district. And we are able to um, baseline our students to get them to proficiency and a larger number of them in proficiency. Um, I feel that the assessments will um, levelize and we won't have to do as many assessments. Um, I think we do more gauges because we wanna make sure that they're learning, you know, um, our students are in the, the MTSS process. We wanna know that they, they're, they're having some sense of game and so um, um, that is a very sensitive topic if it's over-testing students. Um, my previous district, there was a time that I counted on the calendar as a principal. And we were testing out of a hundred eighty days, thirty-three days. That's a lot. And so that, you know, I, I came from a high-performing district and we were testing thirty-two days. You know, it's something that we really have to evaluate from um, an accountability standpoint. It's more of a state issue. Uh, we're doing the best we can, but I, I, it is a sensitive topic and it's something we will address, especially as student achievement improves.
Thank you very much for sharing and so now we'll go back, um, and I've kinda gotta. Made myself a little bookmark as to where we've progressed on the online and ask those that are. Uh, with us in this meeting online to continue to post your questions. And uh, comments so that we can continue to incorporate those into tonight's discussion, so. Uh, at this time, I'll ask um, Ms. Woodard. Ms. Ford? Ms. Ford, if you would, come forward please. Thank you and welcome. Listen, it's working now.
How y'all doing? My thing is, I am a stay-at-home parent and I have five children. My husband works a full-time job, but with the pandemic that's going on right now, I have lost several family members. So my question is, widen down what you wanna do with baby all year, school tradition. I talk with my children and the three oldest, I said, they don't wanna come back to school right now. Not until this is under control and I feel the same way. I can't protect my children at school. Because for one, I know I have gone to some schools and cleaning needs and chores and bathroom and so. Kids are not washing their hands, so I don't know what children to wash their hands, you don't know who they've been around at home. And you're gonna send the kids back to school and it's gonna be a full classroom. On top of that, you're putting extra stress on top of the people that have to clean it. And you're putting extra stress on top of the teachers because I know the teachers, from my understanding from them dealing with my kids, they treat my children like they're dead. Along with all the other kids. So it's not only gonna be stressful to the teachers, the students, but it's gonna be stressful to the parents as well. I like it for the babies right now, until this thing blows over. Also, you said you came from a school that had um, high education. And you had, you trying to come down here to Fairview, this is where my children, they lived in Columbus, you know, in high school. And you're trying to set them to the same standard. I don't think that that's fair. Because at the same time, you have to look at the thing that, if the parents are not doing what they need to do at home. If the teachers teach them, they go home. And the parents are not working with them. If you get children to come back to the schoolhouse and the teacher have to check their work. And they haven't made any effort to help the children, you're only working the teachers. So how is that fair for the parents, the teachers, or the students? For them to have to go all year round. I mean, is it benefiting your salary or something for them to go all year round like that? And I'm just being honest.
Well, okay. Ms. Ford, I really appreciate you sharing with us because obviously we take this very seriously as a board for us to take the time to do this and we just ask that. You share openly as you're doing. But no one's here to try to get one up on another. And what I mean by that is that, and what I mean by that is that, you know, it's unfair for, for any accusation to say, does her pay get changed because we go more? Because it doesn't, just like a teacher's pay would not get changed or anything along those lines. So I just ask that. For, for everyone online as well as here, let us continue to have an open, fluid dialogue. About the issue that we're talking about because no one's here to try to get one up on anyone else. We really are ser, taking this seriously. In the, in the respect of that we wanna have good dialogue and fruitful discussion and not. Get into he said, she said, because that benefits, certainly that benefit the children of the district, it doesn't benefit anyone here. And I know, and I know that that wasn't something that you were trying to go forward with, but I just ask for anyone who is here to come for. Uh, to talk about it, that let's just keep this as a community dialogue because that's what we're trying to do. And I appreciate that very much.
And I, I, I really would like to address the issue. I think we're talking about two separate things. Uh, I think we're, uh, and let me know if I've addressed all your questions. Uh, I, I said I came from a high-performing district. Uh, I do have high expectations of all students. I do believe our students can learn at high levels. I think that, I, I, I do feel that. I know our students can learn at high levels. I think our students have some significant improvement. I really would have, we really would have been blessed if we didn't, the pandemic did hit and we were able to assess last May, but it didn't happen. Uh, and so I think that the twofold question, I think we have a concern about our students returning back to school. I think we're mixing that with the modified, and I do wanna address that because I wanna be very forward and transparent. Um, I had the opportunity to go to our spelling bee in which our students competed against other students across Louds County. And what I saw. Is I saw uh, some of our students that had issues with socialization. Confidence, their ability to stay in the room and, and then marched. Most of our kids in March, which is coming up, would have been out of school or in school two days a week for a whole year. Uh, the level of suicides, uh, random acts of violence, socialization, child abuse. There are significant implications of our students staying at home. There are significant implications of our students staying at home. Is that a bold decision? Yes. Is it an important decision? Yes. You know, I, I, I sent out, you know, some more research that, that has been conducted, and I concur with the research, most of our cases have come from people from outside inside. A lot of our cases have come from athletics, but our cases are not coming from the content of our two students wearing their masks. And thank you to parents for sending your kids to school with masks, um, wearing a mask and social distancing. That's not where our kids are getting comforted. And so, um, I, it's a moral imperative that we begin the process of looking at that, looking at when they return. It's, it, it, they cannot stay out of school for another year and a half. We, we're not gonna be in this to next birthday, we need to be in this for, to the Christmas after that.
So why not put more time on life, or even if the students choose, or let them at least have some say-so over, or an opinion? Now I'm telling you how they feel about the situation. I've learned that with my five children, listening is easier than always trying to tell them, you need to do this, this is what's best, this is what's best. But my children, they, you know, bear over to me, and when I say we talk about anything, everything, it's easier that way. At least to involve the students, yes, the parents, we do have some parents that go to work a new time. We have some parents that are divorced and single parents, and idiots, but idiots, they talk about being married and then having kids, you know? Because it's a lot, you know, you deal with on day-to-day basis. And then my son, he's, uh, I'd be sixteen, he said, Mom, I really do enjoy school. He said, but it gets boring. He said, it's a lot of work in the capital, and he's been to school, he enjoys it either way. But he said, it's just a lot going on. And I have my twelve-year-old, she always had like a Milton break in, because she said it's so much, going to school and being at home. So how do you balance between the two? Where you want to keep her safe, the children safe, but then I can make you, you know, having to go to school, you know, put me at extra strength on top of the rest.
And it's, it's a difficult decision, um, and as a parent, I, I understand, and it's, it's one of the reasons why we're in the hybrid schedule. It's a reason why we have the hybrid and virtual option, is because we gave that option to the parents. We wanted to make sure that those decisions are made by children, but now that we, I mean, made by parents. But now that we know differently, we understand the safety protocol, what we need to do to be safe. We need to make decisions that are going to be better for our students. And as parents, you'll have a choice related to that. We also understand that some of our kids will want to learn better, um, virtually, and, and some parents will choose to keep their kids, um, in school four days a week. But we also know that we can't be out of school for two years and expect to have academic gains and, and have student achievement. And while I understand that you're a parent, and you're married, and you have a, 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 a family, every student doesn't have that opportunity. And so we have to think about the greater good of all of our students. Um, and the longer that they're out, the more socialization issues we're gonna have. There are several school districts throughout the state that have gone that traditional and have been very successful. And as a community, I feel that as we take a step in that direction, that we will be successful also, because we all want the same outcome. We want our students to achieve at high levels, we want them to stay safe, we want this district to grow. This district has been a graded, a, a D district for the last decade, eleven years, and we want to get beyond that. We want to be able to give our students the most optimal opportunity to be college, career, and list prepared. But as a mother, I understand your fears, um, I, and I do feel, and I didn't feel this in the beginning, but seeing, watching the spelling bee, I can see that the longer we stay out on a traditional schedule, how long-termly that's going to be detrimental to our children in this community, especially when the assessment starts. Um, M.D.E. is not gonna give us, next year, we're gonna, we're gonna be expected to perform. And if you got a child in third grade, and they've been virtual, they're gonna be expected to pass that test. Our kids are gonna be expected to pass the math test, and if they don't pass those tests, they're not gonna graduate. And like I said, I don't want to be here next year if we have a sixty percent, uh, graduation rate, or that, or half our kids didn't pass the third day reading gate, or if our accountability has decreased, and everybody can be upset about it, and we're just trying to mitigate those situations for what we're doing now. Please understand my salary does not go up based on the decisions I make. It is much easier for me not to be innovative and not think about the best interest of the students. It's easier for me to appease people and not to be here today to answer these questions from these parents and community members. But it's important to me as a next generation to be able to provide our students as much as we can as far as preparing them for college, career, and list preparation. I would tell you as a mother, I totally understand the safety, and I, I, I keep saying this, you know, I have two granddaughters. Everybody has that stress level. So just know whatever you're feeling, these five grandparents are feeling, I am as a parent, grandparent. You know, I was gonna wait till March second to get my COVID vaccination, I didn't even want to get one. But you know, when I hear that it's a variant that may affect children, and I have two grandchildren, I'm going to get it next week. You know, I'm living this through just like you are. I'm not immune to what's happening in the world, so I empathize with you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ford. Appreciate you sharing. Ms. Jethro? Okay, Ms. Jethro, would you, uh, would please come up? Thank you very much.
There's one other part of her question, um, and I think this is a reoccurring question. People keep saying, why now? And like I said before, um, as a community and as a district, we've made a lot of accommodations already. We have set schedules for three days a week. We've had to make adjustments, and so I, I just feel like if we ever get to a sense of normalcy, that we would want to go back to a modi- a, a, a modified calendar, especially because we've made adjustments already.
Thank you very much for sharing. Welcome. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, input that I want to kind of discuss about my family with this, but no, um, I really should be going to the university stupid. And I represent the educa- exceptional educator behalf of, of otherwise known as special education. And when it comes to those, um, the critical point of instruction in those breaks in which significant loss of progress usually occur, are we gonna provide compensatory educational services for those, or what would it look like for those, that population of students?
For special education students? Same accommodation, nothing's gonna change there. You know, are we gonna ask them to come, um, to intercession? Yes. Um, are we still gonna have E.S.Y.? Yes, in the summer, you know, we, we're still gonna, uh, meet those accommodations. Anything with our core curricula is not going to change. Those student needs, I feel, will be better served by getting remediation during, um, those, those times. And so I really feel like we're gonna see a significant benefit, especially with our students, um, that have, uh, three or more grade levels, uh, better, three or more grade levels behind them, or have deficiency, um, in our special needs.
Okay, and specifically, I want to talk about those with significant positive benefits, because any loss, uh, I mean, loss is gonna occur in, in, in any critical point of instruction that's going to happen. Typically, it's about two weeks to get back into routine. So are we gonna provide compensatory educational service during that time in which we have breaks? Because we're talking about forty-five, fifteen schedule that you were talking about. So where was the data gathered to analyze where they would say, how would they fare with it? Because, um, you know, in keeping with doing what's in the best interest of them, um, because that's what I'm passionate about. That's, I, I love what I do. So, exactly, like during those breaks, what is it going to look like for them? Like, what are we going to do for them specifically?
And, and we will accommodate those special needs students based on their IEP, you know, it's been difficult to accommodate them during pandemic, you know? You know, do I expect, um, with the federal law that has not ceased to address its bad issues that we're, we're federally operating due? I mean, if we got it evaluated only now, we will have problems. And so we're, we're gonna make adjustments and meet the needs of those students based on their IEPs. But like I said, you know, right now, it's just, it's been difficult. It's hard to do occupational therapy. It's hard to do some of the things that are required of them, and so we will make those adjustments during those times.
So that maybe services provide.
Yes, it may, if, federal, you know, that means we must, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing. Mr. Andrew Mercer, welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to get to come and talk to you guys about this. Um, I, my wife, Jamie, one that provided the comment, I asked her to text me and say what she was asking, and she hasn't responded, so I'm not totally sure. Um, but I think that it addresses it in this letter that we've put together. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and I just want to introduce myself first. Um, I'm Dr. Mercer, I'm actually an associate professor in geosciences at Mississippi State. I have three kids that are in C.M.S.D., I've got a ninth grader at the high school, a sixth grader at the middle school, and a fifth grader at Franklin. And my kids are kind of a unique spectrum. I've got one child that's really high-performing, involved in a lot of extracurriculars, intellectually gifted. And then I have one who's kind of maybe middle of the road in terms of intellectual, um, stuff. He's got an IEP, and he's got a few challenges, he's in inclusion and things like that. And then I also have a daughter who is our youngest at Franklin, and she has severe special needs. She's intellectually delayed, she has, um, in, or she has a mood disorder that's required her to have hospitalizations and all kinds of different challenges over the last several years. So we've really looked at this thing from a lot of different points of view. We've looked at it from the, uh, extracurricular side for the high-performing students, as well as for the students that are, um, on the lower performing end or special needs. Um, just to give you a little more background about Jamie and me, uh, we both volunteered in the PTO at Cook for several years. Um, Jamie was actually the president of the PTO, and I think still is, although that's kind of fuzzy because of the pandemic, I'm not sure what happened with that. But she did that for two years, and we also helped facilitate the backpack program at Cook, where we were actually helping to distribute food to kids that needed it. Um, so we're very passionate about the, the, the kids in this district, and we're very passionate about the teachers, we love all the teachers. They're awesome, and we have several friends, obviously, that are teachers as a result. Um, we don't want to necessarily come in and speak for all of the teachers, but I do want to kind of tell you what we've heard from several of our contacts in the schools and share some concerns that we had had as a result. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and go through those now. Um, at the board, the previous board meeting that we watched through, um, through YouTube, we, Ms. Turner presented some details from her survey where she said that, um, teachers were exhausted. And in that discussion, Dr. Labatt mentioned that this was one of the reasons why the modified schedule would help with the teacher burnout. Um, some teachers that we've spoken to, not all, but some, mentioned that this actually might, they were unsettled, I guess, by the statement, because they felt that maybe it wasn't that they would be, that they didn't really, I guess, know what the impact would be. Uh, the exact way that they worded it was, they weren't necessarily opposed to the modified schedule at some point, but they wanted to make sure that the board took adequate time to really look at it in detail and make sure they had a really strong plan going forward as to how they would implement it. Um, several of the teachers pointed out that in Corinth, this process took three years before they made this change. It was not a, like, we're gonna just flip the switch in a few weeks and here we are with a new schedule. Um, and we personally agree that the teacher, with the teachers, that it does feel rushed, and it might not hurt us to maybe really step back and look at it and take our time as we ease into that process. Um, we don't even know what COVID's gonna look like six months from now, right? We don't know, there's new variants, as Dr. Labatt mentioned, COVID could be worse, right? We could have new strains, there's the South African strain that everybody's nervous about. We don't even know if the vaccines will be working six months from now. And so it just feels like we're taking a risk by making a big change to the calendar when we don't even know what the future holds in the next few weeks. Every teacher that we've talked to has said that they're exhausted and completely and utterly worn out, and, and we can sympathize that as parents. I'm a professor, my wife has end-stage renal disease, so I can't get exposed to COVID, or it could be fatal for her. So I've been virtual, trying to manage children at home and being a professor, and top of her having to be on dialysis every day. So I can sympathize with the burnout and the stress, for sure. And I, the teachers that we've talked to have indicated that losing a month of their summer this year just to have to roll into this new calendar is gonna make them feel even more weary and underappreciated. The summer that they thought they were gonna have, that they might now lose if we end up changing the calendar. We certainly shared this concern with them, and we felt like it was at least worth maybe taking a step back and looking at this thing more carefully for another year, and make sure that we really understand what kind of change we're making before we move forward with it. Um, another issue that we had was related to extracurricular activities. Um, as you probably thought about, the calendars are gonna be complicated with that. Athletic practices are not just gonna quit meeting over breaks. Um, students aren't necessarily gonna get the breaks that they need to get re- readjusted or ready to go back to school, because they're gonna be busy with act- with, um, other extracurricular activities the entire time. The same is true for the arts, um, for band, choir, theater, there's lots of clinics, camps, and programs that are offered in the summer. And these are opportunities for enrichment, and I think this might have been what Jamie was getting at, is our kids may not be able to participate in these because they have to go to school instead. So they can't do these extra enrichment activities that other kids in other districts can do, so they're not able to get the same enrichment level as the other kids are, because our kids will be in school during those times instead. Um, so it does eliminate, or makes it more difficult, I guess, to hone your skills, because these programs are only offered at certain times of the year, and if the kids are in school, then this can be a problem. Another issue that is not really directly affected us yet, but might one day, is related to the high school students, and specifically, it's high school students that have to get summer jobs. I mean, we know that lots of high school students out there have to either help their families to support financially, they go get jobs to pay for college, they do post-graduation life, some of them help with family expenses, whatever it might be. By moving to a modified schedule, you make it harder for these kids to get these jobs, because all of a sudden, instead of having three months to work, they have two weeks and then they have to go back to school. And employers aren't gonna be likely to hire students at two-week intervals to fill in a gap, and then these guys are gonna constantly be rolling on and off of jobs, which might be difficult. It also is difficult for me as a professor and for anybody that works in higher education, because our schedules aren't gonna align with, with, um, the school district's schedule. So if kids want to go take a class at the community college or something like that, their schedule's not gonna align with their calendar in the high school. And so these are issues that I feel like that probably just need to be explored in more detail before a final decision is made on the calendar. Another thing is related to my youngest, who's the, my child that has special needs. Um, she has a pretty severe mood disorder and intellectual disability, and this makes transitions really difficult for her. Um, she's in a self-contained classroom at Franklin with only a handful of other students. She attends four days a week because of the way that that classroom is set up, and we're grateful for that. And unfortunately, and this is to no fault of her teachers or the school or anything, sh- her class has been exposed to COVID two or three times over the last, um, year or so, and her whole class has just had to be shut down because there's not another teacher that can fill in in that classroom. Um, and so, and I totally get that, that's absolutely what is the right thing to do. Because again, my wife has end-stage renal disease, and I don't want to get COVID and bring it into my house, or it could be really bad. So we totally sympathize and understand that. But what we learned through that process is that it's very difficult for her to transition back into school when she's out in these two-week intervals. Um, it makes it so it's not like a summer break where she has a honeymoon period where she can look forward to going visit family or go take a trip or something like that. She just sits at home for two weeks, tries to do school at home, and then goes back two weeks later, and it's a mess for the first day or two when she gets back until she can get back into her routine. And so this is something that has kind of become more personal to us in this last year. Because of COVID, we've really seen how she responds to that. And I know that she's not the only kid with those issues in the school district, and that's something that definitely should at least be considered before you make a final decision. Um, one of the main reasons that we heard for the need for this change was to prevent the summer slide. And whilst studies are mixed on a modified calendar, I don't, I'm personally, I'm not an expert on educational research, so I don't know what the studies say, but I do know that there are mixed responses about it, or else it wouldn't be as controversial as it is. Um, we felt like that this past year with our stu- with our kids, they were in the extended school year program, and we felt like that that program was outstanding. We really appreciated it. We felt like all the teachers that facilitated that program did a great job, especially during the beginning of a pandemic, when we didn't even know how to do things virtually, they did a really great job. Um, and so we feel like that that program, if we expand on that program, might be a better alternative to an extended school year, because then that, I think, we already got that nailed down pretty well, in my opinion. And kids need time to be kids, right? They're kids, they should be able to travel, they should be able to play, they should be able to relax. They don't want to get burned out, or they're not gonna perform well in school, just like the teachers don't want to get burned out, or they're not gonna perform well as educators. So we just want to make sure that we, that we communicate that, at least in our opinion, it's gonna be more, much more difficult for kids to do that, and kids are gonna be more likely to be burned out by having to go back to school a month after they've been out in the summer, and then having these two-week breaks here and there. They're not gonna get as much opportunity to interact with the world and with their friends. Um, and also, and again, this is not something that we personally have had to deal with, but I imagine that for parents that need childcare, it's much more difficult to find that childcare in a two-week block here or there than it is to know it's coming for the summer, and say, this one summer, I know I need to find childcare for this period. Um, so we can't let school become a ch- just childcare, intercessions can't become childcare. It has to be something that's more concrete, I guess. One final concern we've had is with a few teachers and staff, and obviously I can't say names, but there are concerns that some of them feel like that they may not be able to speak up their concerns with the board or whatever it might be. So they, so during the last meeting, there was a statement that said, most of the teachers are on board, and they haven't heard anything or seen any. and that you haven't heard anything or seen any emails. A question might be for you guys to ask, why have we not got any emails? Is it because the teachers are on board with this or is it because the teachers maybe don't feel comfortable addressing it? For whatever reason, maybe there's a culture there where they're concerned about that. Um so teachers shouldn't have to fear retaliation or losing their job for disagreeing with any leadership. I'm not, I don't know for sure that that's what would happen, but that's what at least has been communicated to us. If it's not a possibility, then we need to at least sure, be sure that we're working as a district towards unity and teamwork. We're only gonna be able to be successful as a group if we're able to be free to express our thoughts and opinions about situations and that's what we are grateful for this particular forum. I do wanna take a, just one more minute, I know I've talked for a while, but the last thing I wanna say is um we do understand how difficult this year has been. Um we've been right in the middle of it too. We do not envy the situation, we don't envy the challenges that you guys and the difficult decisions that you've had to make over the last year. COVID's taken a toll on everybody and everybody is struggling. We just hope that you make sure and take your time before you make a big decision on how we're gonna move forward with the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you ver- thank you very much for sharing with us, um Dr. Mercer and uh you know, just one thing before I turn over the questions part to Dr. Labatt that I will just be very clear about is before Dr. Labatt arrived, this board, each one of us here has made it very clear that our mission is absolute transparency, which is why we're here today. And we're, you have a hundred and fifty people watching online just because we do want to hear. We we understand that there may have been a system that existed before to where there was, you know, ideas that were being suppressed or or people concerned about what's going on, but that no longer exists here. And if someone feels that way, I I hate that maybe there might be some concerns that linger from from times before. But that doesn't exist any longer and certainly, yes, there's a chain of command and way we do things, but this board has been very proactive and will continue to be proactive in hearing from all people who are working, whether it be parents, students, uh whomever, whether it be through our our meetings, uh us holding sto- stakeholder meetings as we're doing now because we we realize that to know the pulse of the, of what's going on throughout the community is that we have to have the face-to-face dialogue. And so in no way am I pushing back on your comment, other than just to assert the truth that exists is that no one on this board or Dr. Bot or anyone else wants to, for someone to feel that way. And if they feel that way, maybe there's a methodology that they need to come forward with of providing it because there's no retribution, retaliation or any harboring of of ill will thoughts for someone who wants to share, just like you've done tonight. Because we do want to hear so that we can make the best, most informed decisions of how things should move forward. So, you know, on that, on that part, I just wanted to share that aspect of it and and hopefully the person who may have had those concerns going forward will realize that that they don't have to continue to feel that way, that they will come forward and and ask and certainly like I mentioned, there is a chain of command of how things go, but we do periodically try to have these meetings to where anyone can come out, teacher, stakeholder, whomever, and share with us on a wide array and certainly COVID, like anything, has thrown a a keek into those types of forums that we've held, but we do still try to do our absolute best to to address that, so. And uh Dr. Labatt, a couple of things I know that we've heard regarding teacher exhaustion and uh in-school during programs. Um you know, while others would be out of school for students being able to participate in camps and other things uh that may be occurring, so how do you wanna address that? Um and also the, you know, jobs for students, I know that's another one that we've also touched on.
Uh as far as enrichment for students, um I said this at the beginning, we would never hinder our students from being involved in enrichment activity um during those times. Um Corinth spoke to that and ten uh very intentionally and told us that in in we would just never do that as a district, hinder our students. I keep hearing that it took three years for Corinth to implement and I think I I I that's a myth. It it was not a three-year implementation process. I won't get the facts on that because I've heard it several times and I think that's a misunderstanding um on something he said that that may have been taken out of context that he didn't say it takes three years to implement. He did say the International Fatoret, which is the curriculum that they currently have, was a three-year implementation. So I think that that was, that was a a myth or misconception about the current implementation. Um and I know that this is a big change during COVID. Um and I addressed this earlier about us as a community and made accommodation for our students to come two days a week. We've dealt with daycare, we've dealt with um other supplemental programs and relatives supporting our students two days a week. And so um we felt that this was the ideal time because we've had, we had to have already made accommodations. Um and uh not knowing what's gonna happen for the next um six months to a year um is concerning um from a student achievement aspect. Um not only with our our students returning, but also with with burnout because we don't know the expectation and the breaks um I think will um be uh good for our teachers and our students. Um as it relates to summer jobs, um I I've talked about this before and uh I I think you could, you said two week intervals for them to work um and like I said it before, this summer, um students and teachers will have about uh eight weeks, seven or eight weeks for the summer. Um next year would be the 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 bigger adjustments. Um and if they're hired um during the, they're, they can work that time during the year. Um but I do also want to expressly say that I feel that summer work is important. It's 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 a lot of our students depend on that income to su- to support their family. But um you know, I don't want our students to feel, and we've had problems with this with dropout, that them working a minimum wage job is going to take them long-term where they need to be and that their academic success at school is 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 important, is essential. And them achieving at high levels is is very important. So um we we support them working and um it's our hope that they'll be able to work some of those times that we take out of the summer break um for the modified calendar if they, where the work will be able to work on that time um um during the intercessions. We have had students to 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 get jobs and 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 work them and then get laid off and then wanna come back to school. So the employment situation with what we're dealing with with students supporting family is a bigger issue than than the modified calendar. Um our post-secondary institutions are very aware, we did look into the dual enrollment situation as far as our students taking courses and have um talked about those accommodations and that has been addressed. Um I I I hope that I understood you right about um when your child was out for several weeks with learning interruptions because of COVID nineteen. Um that is another reason why the the student achievement of our students is so important now. It's something I mentioned in the the um the the board meeting of uh uh two weeks ago is that with learning interruptions and the summer slide that we we don't wanna see um student achievement decline to a place that we we can't get out of um for three to five years or five to seven years. Um I did wanna make uh when I said that it was a compelling argument for teacher burnout um to know what to expect. Um you know, we've talked to, well, I've talked to psychologists throughout the state and um and the expectation of how long we're gonna be in this crisis. And I really do feel like this eight weeks and then us going to forty-five fifteen, when we do have that first intercession, that our teachers will feel a a a long sense of break. I think Deja said it felt like a weekend. Um during Christmas break, I couldn't agree with her more, but I I feel like these more, a more balanced calendar will effectively help our teachers to deal with the exhaustion. E- especially because I know that there's a ninety percent chance that we will still be in um in this situation with with masks and dealing with um disease prevention. Did I miss anything? Anything? And E S Y will continue, that's the program you're talking about, that's a state requirement and has certain regulatory compliances that are federal that we we must do. So that's something that we definitely continue.
And um couple of things I wanna make sure of, um schedule aligned, I think, you know, you know, treat for, there are other places outside of Corinth, I mean certainly there are places across the country. I mean, we, as much as we champion, you know, Mississippi pushing ahead and educational, you know, progress and things. You know, there are others that are still ahead of us and and what they're doing. And so I think, you know, you know, trust, you know, that we look into how other schools align with higher institutions in other areas that maybe this particular type of schooling of a modified calendar is more prevalent as than a traditional type calendar would be something I think, you know, to really look harder into uh to get more details on. Uh with respect to, you know, another teacher, I know that's something that's more personnel and and certainly relevant in what needs to be done. That would be Dr. Labatt to look into that aspect. When certain situations come up, COVID to make sure that services or, you know, your child, your own child's able to continue with their um schooling. Um and I think a a very strong point, uh your question very well received, that you're, a very strong point is about the virtual doing well and everything. And hopefully, you know, the silver lining to all the things we're dealing with COVID is that it did thrust everyone into this virtual world of delivering education and doing different things. And as, you know, we realize that with the um snow days and other than weather, the events that have happened recently have disrupted coming to school, uh students still being able to get online and do their lessons and certainly we've gotta work to increase participation and everything and 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 eliminate some of the blind spots that exist with respect to connectivity and and others. But um I think that's something I I agree with you wholeheartedly that we want to continue to champion and and grow our platform and and delivery of those services to to continue to help students be able to um be a part of school even when they're not here on the campuses and everything. Um and to make sure um that, is there any questions that I missed or?
I I did have something else that was at the bottom of my sheet. You know, my apologies if anybody feel that they would be retaliated against for asking a question about student achievement. We did roll this out with a a seven, seven-person committee um and did decentralize the information um to to our principals. And so if questions weren't addressed, then I apologize, the articles were not reviewed, I apologize. Um but I did receive a couple of emails from teachers, which I not only um wrote them back, but I also went by their schools to answer questions that were very um detailed, same thing, like are we really going to school year long? That was like the first major question, like, why do we have to work more? You know, because we're saying year long and not saying modified, answered answered those questions. So, you know, my apologies and I never want anybody to feel that way. Um and 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 I I think a big part of this is it's just, it's hard to communicate when you're trying to do disease prevention. You know, um you know, I talk to superintendents all over the country and we just have to forgive ourselves for it. It's not intentional, nobody's trying to forward information and not tell teachers about what's going on or give out the information that's needed to make a a a decision in the best interest of students. And so I think it's it's dealing with the times and what with the elements of disease prevention and trying to communicate effectively. Uh I probably would never have tried to have a face-to-face meeting in December or January just because of number of deaths in my own county. I I just, I just did not wanna do that. I do not like doing online meetings, actually, I totally detested the whole situation because I'm looking at blank screens with cameras and not people. Like I, like I can build this room, I can see people, you know, I can see what people are trying to ask. I can not forget your question because I'm looking at you and thinking about your child at Franklin. And so when you're looking at a screen, it's just very different, you know, the communication is just, it's it's difficult. Um but we did the best we could during that time. And I'll reiterate that the uh it wasn't a push to get it done quickly as much as we always get a calendar adopted in February. And secondly, we felt like this was the best time because we've already made adjustments to our schedule because our students are hybrid and virtual.
I did wanna make one other point if I can, I it just kinda dawned on me while we were talking. Um as a professor at State, one of the jobs that I've had has been serving as the undergraduate coordinator in my department, which means that we're involved in recruiting high school students and we're involved in admitting students and getting them through orientation and getting their classes and all those kinds of things. The calendar for that at Mississippi State begins at the end of May and most of those decisions are, most of the students have their calendar, their schedules made up by the middle of June. Will this extended deadline force high school seniors in CMSD to not be able to get the classes that they want if they move on to the university because they haven't yet been able to finish high school?
No, no, we asked that question at Corinth, that would not interrupt their 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 academic promise to a four-year institution or a community college for that session.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh Dr. Mercer, and appreciate you sharing with us. Before we go to uh the next person here, I'm gonna take a few that have uh asked questions online. Ms Tina Morgan asks, what is the plan if there are more students than teachers during intercessions?
We always program those, don't need, um those are two important questions, but a lot of it is contingent on budget and priority. I mean that uh we have a significant number of students that are three le- grade levels behind in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. You know, if if that's an area of concern, we would concentrate there. We would look at our students, of course, that are uh that are two years behind, but those that are three years behind um stand a greater chance of dropping out and we have a percentage of those students. So we do it based on priority as far as um academic achievement and gaps um and budget. I will say that we will try to be um mindful of making sure that we we provide some type of enrichment activity for our students that are excelling during those enrichments. So it won't be, generally our summer programs are are geared towards remediation or literacy total. And so we wanna make sure that as we plan these, that we we have the remediation for those students that are three grade levels behind and two grade levels behind. But we also um incorporate project-based learning and some other enriching activities for our students that are excelling.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Uh Ms Anisha Nash states, so the Boys and Girls Club is changing their schedule. The last time I checked, they were closed most of the school holidays. So I guess it's a question about Boys and Girls Club, maybe the Y, um any of the other part, community partners that we work with that provide after-school programs or other services to our students. How will they, are they adapting, have they agreed to adapt, where where does that stand, those those relationships?
Yes, we included included them as community partners during all of our stakeholder meetings. The YMCA, Parks and Recreation in the Boys and Girls Club have been very supportive of our schedule. Um they account, they will make adjustments based on the calendar um for Columbus Municipal School District.
All right, um. Yes, ma'am. Ms Chelsea Petty. Welcome.
Good evening, um I am Chelsea Petty. I have been the middle school drama teacher uh here in Columbus School District for ten years now. Um I love my job, I love my school, I love my kids, that's what I call my students. And prior to teaching here, I taught three years at Okalona High School. And every, almost every moment of my teaching career has been spent teaching in Title I schools. And this is where I love to be. I love everything about this. I feel like my experience has given me a lot of insight into the needs of the children that I serve daily. Uh in my time here, I have spent five summers working with a variety of summer programs. And I have seen some great moments and I have definitely seen areas for improvement. Our summer programs meet many needs of our students here. And I would love to see them to do even more to close that summer slide. Um our summer programs in the past, there is only five weeks between the ending of the program and the start of the next school year. That is the exact amount of time proposed by modified calendar B. The exact amount of time. However, a modified calendar creates many other issues that we're not currently facing amongst the many other challenges we've gotten from this past year. For one, it takes away uh opportunities for both students and teachers. Students who wish to take summer courses or attend summer camps, I know this has been addressed, such as Mississippi State, MUW, or even Columbus Arts Council, where I have done arts camps for the past several years. These opportunities will be given to other students who follow a traditional calendar or are private school students. And for our teachers, our educational opportunities are going to be taken away from summertime. I'm a graduate student. I am pursuing a specialist degree in theater education. It is the first of its kind in the country. Next year, I'll be one of only seven students in the country to hold a degree and I'm your theater teacher. But I have to take off the first two weeks of the school year in order to finish that degree. During the time that it's most important for me to be at school, I will have to be absent in order to better serve them. As the sole theater teacher still operating in this district, I can assure- As the sole theater teacher still operating in this district, I can assure you, this schedule does not help the arts. It interrupts our rehearsal schedules, our preparation for productions, our competitions, which are actually held during one of the intervals that is proposed. Um, having been on the first stakeholders meeting, I was very disturbed by the assertion made by the superintendent of Corin that any teacher could just come in and teach an arts class as a way to attract students to attend these remediation during breaks. And while I agree, you can certainly attract students to come to a well-run arts program, I do it all the time, uh, expecting fun and then receiving so much more. Here in Columbus, you have some of the finest art, music, dance, and theater teachers in the state of Mississippi. We have the trophies to prove it. We are specialists in what we do. We cannot easily be replaced by an unqualified individual in an attempt to force students to do more than the required 180 days of school. Also, our entire city, the way it functions and does business, will have to change. Summer camps, daycares, band camps, family vacations, visits to parents and grandparents who live far away, summer employment will all have to accommodate a new calendar. Our whole city will have to change in order to change this. No more two-month summer jobs for our high schoolers. Coming from a home of poverty myself, my summer job was vitally important to my family. I could work full-time hours in the summer, make advances that would give me a raise before I headed into the next school year, where I only worked a few hours a week because focus was on school. I knew that my path out was education, but in the meantime, I had to work. My job helped pay for our family's vehicle, our insurance, as well as the little things that our food stamps didn't buy. Either our area businesses have to adjust to accommodate our students' new schedules, or our students will simply lose that employment. The most concerning thing for me, however, is a lack of data. There is no proof that completely altering all of this and taking the opportunities away will actually improve the education of our children. I looked up the articles that were emailed to us and I checked a lot of their sources and their authors. And most of these articles show conflicting views. And many of these authors have never spent a day as a teacher in a Title I school. The article cited student achievement scores improve when those students are attending year-round school is from the California Board of Education, which goes on to list a massive number of negatives, including those mandatory remediation sessions on the in-between breaks and its ineffectiveness as an educational strategy for the majority of students. And further, it never tells where it gets this information. The US News article quotes founders of various summer programs who agree that summer programs are a vital part of continuing the education of our students. And as I stated before, I firmly believe they are. We definitely need to continue to improve our summer offerings. The article never states that altering the school calendar is the answer. In fact, the people who were interviewed in this article would actually lose their livelihoods of providing summer curriculum if all schools were to take this route. Looking at the data provided by Corin's School District, there's little or no actual improvement between their traditional school students and modified calendar students. And in fact, it really doesn't matter what Corin's does because Corin's School District doesn't look like Columbus's School District. What's right for their students and community is not necessarily what's right for us here in Columbus. I don't envy your position in having to make major decisions such as this because these are decisions that are going to have lasting and far-reaching impact on our entire city and the surrounding area. I am not called to be in your position. I am far too much in love with what I do every day. But as someone who works on your front lines and will be greatly impacted along with the children I have given my life to teach, I'm asking that you do not do this calendar. Columbus School District is not a guinea pig, and these are our lives that will be affected. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Petty, um, Mrs. Petty for sharing that with us. Great, we appreciate you doing that and congratulations on your effort and your educational endeavors as well. We'll continue to cheer you on in that effort. Thank you. Now,
Oh, I, I was gonna address some of them.
Yes.
Okay, um, the reason why the summer programs are five weeks, um, in the summer is generally, um, based on, on, um, teacher availability and us giving our teachers who work summer school a break. So, because generally we start summer school a week, a week or two after school was out, which is the end of May. And so in order to give the teachers that, that work summer school a break, we don't extend it to, to six weeks or after Fourth of July. So that's the reason for the five or six week, um, summer school break. Um, and I said this earlier in the meeting, um, our attendance in summer school is, is not as high as we would like it to be. Um, and I, and I really feel like the reason why it, it, the attendance is, it's not good is because of teacher burnout. At the end of May after sick testing, I feel like everybody's done and the students are done. And so we, we generally try to recruit, you know, as much as we can. We have done enrichment, wonder media, and arts and have tried to get students to sign up. And I feel like the summer school programs have been good, um, but I just feel like the participation, um, is, is the window just because of, of burnout. Um, do y'all have other? Dr. Schumek has it.
Doctor, I don't. That was very well, um, spoken. Her comments were very strongly delivered and, and well-received. And I appreciate you very much for sharing them, and I didn't have any questions. I know there were some points made of lack of data. Um, and, you know, obviously the accolades with respect to the teachers that we agree on all levels are, are the best it can be. And so, uh, go- going on to our next, looking online, another question that has been asked, let's see here. Ms. Sarah Banks, uh, asks, so what are you going to do about the potential increase of the already teacher shortage? Surely you're, you're not going to do a modified calendar with non-certified teachers? That's laughable.
We always facilitate our summer programs, um, much like we would in intercession with certified teachers. We do like giving opportunities to our teacher assistants, um, during that time to, to help with interventions and, and remediation. We are working extensively with the Mississippi University for Women in improving our teacher pipeline and starting Columbus, um, School District Teacher Academy. Um, that, that is in the works, a recruitment tool that would start in, um, in high school. And have a college and career option pathway, um, through childcare development at Keller and an academic pathway through dual enrollment with the Mississippi University Women. So we are working on that. Um, there's a teacher shortage throughout the state. Um, there's a, a teacher shortage in high content areas, um, across the country. So this is not anything that's abnormal to the Columbus Municipal School District. So we are working on a teacher pipeline program, um, and we hope to get that going for, uh, next fall. Um, we are working with, um, Dr. Hatton and Melinda Lowe to, uh, and we're in the, um, early stages of that, of the teacher pipeline.
Thank you very much, um, and, you know, one comment, question continues to come up, the sit around, teacher shortage. Uh, you know, what are you gonna do? And of course, you know, what are you gonna do if the modified calendar passes and you have even more teachers leave the district? And certainly that is an administrative aspect of it. But my, my concern, when I see those comments and questions, is, you know, certainly understand the intentional nature of what we're looking at and, and how the effects exist. But if in the future, if, if the board, whatever the board decides to do, because it is the will of the board, were to decide, okay, well, let's do the traditional calendar for another year. How do we know that the next year and the next year and the next year, whatever time it is down the future, those same reservations would exist? And then the students would be impacted just the same? And so it's, I guess that's one of the questions that I would like to ask is, what do you see from the stu- the staff and how the impacts would be on the students? Whether that, whether the decision is reached this year for the upcoming school year versus the next year? Are teachers who are on the fence about, I like it, but I don't think it's right now, would the, would the same reservations exist next year or the year after?
I don't, I don't want to speak for my teachers, but I just think we're in an unpredictable environment, um, as far as COVID is concerned. Uh, and I think that, you know, knowing that, um, we'll be in disease prevention mode for another year and a half. Um, I don't know if it'll change, um, but right now, I think with everything being so unpredictable, I, I think, I think that that's sort of, you know, part of the modified calendar and the issues people are having is because just the future is uncertain and what we'll do and the decisions we're making. So it's just a, a difficult time and thank you for those who understand how difficult this process is and making these deci- decisions. Um, ultimately, um, the primary goal is for us to improve student achievement. Um, and like I said, um, looking at our numbers and the number of students that we have that are three years behind or more, two years behind or more, which is, uh, we're around 44% of our population. I don't want to be on the back end of that and not to mitigate it early. Um, I don't want to be here at this time explaining why, you know, half our kids didn't pass the third grade reading gate when it's live next year or why our graduation, um, uh, level declined or, um, why we hadn't met the levels of proficiency that we needed, we hadn't needed. Um, you know, I, also looking at our school district, you know, I, 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 as we move towards, um, improving student achievement, you know, we've been a D district for 11 years. 11 years, that's a decade, and, you know, I mentioned that last week at the bicentennial. And historically, um, that's a long time to be an underperforming district. It's, it's a long time and we can only get there together. And I know that we can't continue to do the same thing and expect different results. I think we're steadily improving and we're working hard towards our goals. But every time we do the same thing and we have 20% or 25% of our kids to drop out or we have our kids that leave high school without the skills they're needing or we have our third grade students to take the third grade reading gate and they're not on grade level, we have more problems. And so, um, you know, I, in talking to some of the people in the community from the economic development, we talked about, when you think about kids, there is a shot. And, um, we're fortunate in this room because all of you have, a lot of you have a pers retirement, you have a bachelor's degree, um, you have a means of income, but when I have parents calling me, begging me to, to do something about their child not passing a history exam. Um, when, when I know that a lot of our kids leave high school and go to minimum wage job and don't have a, a, a living wage. I mean, we're fortunate, but our kids don't have the opportunity and the decisions we make impact where they will be in the future, and it is a shot clock. And sometimes we don't have the luxury of saying, we can wait until we're ready because there's children that are going through the school district that need our support, that need interventions, that need academic success and need us as a district and community to try to do something different to make sure they excel. I don't want to be at the D district next year. I don't want our, our, our dropout rate and, uh, graduation rate to always be 25%. I don't want to read about either one of our kids getting killed in the community. It's just a point in time that you get tired and, and we want to do something different and it's not, you know, I don't want anybody to take what we're doing personally. This is all about student achievement. These are all about kids. It's about looking at 200 kids every time we graduate and understanding that, that 20 to 30 of those, those kids will be, that will, will drop out. And looking at some of our numbers of sixth and seventh and eighth grade with three years behind, that number may increase to 30% over the next five to seven years because of COVID. Because of them going to school two days a week for us being out of school for a year. I don't want to be on the other side of this. I want to be in front of it as a district and as, as a CMSD family. And I just want us to think about the kids because two days a week with what we're seeing with our achievement data is not going to get it. Them being out of school for a year is not going to get it. And I, I, uh, and I, and I want us to think about how fortunate we are and the people that have made the sacrifices for us to be able to get a bachelor's degree or be able to even have a job that has benefits, you know, and long-term, um, uh, retirement. You know, and, and I know we've talked about employee students. It's been really hard to get our kids focused on education because of employment. You know, and I'm not exactly happy with our local merchants that are working them and they're not going to class all the time. Because when education is secondary and they take the minimum wage job long-term, what is that going to do for our kids? And so this is about students, this is not personal. There was never a, 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 a time that I didn't want to give information. Um, I would go over this presentation a hundred times, I would answer these questions a million times. But this is all about student achievement. This is about where we want to be as a district. You know, this, next year will be our 12th year. We will do an assessment, we're not doing an assessment this year. And we got to ask ourselves, do we want to remain at the D district? Is that comfortable? And what are we going to do to get there? What changes are we going to make as a district? You know, are we willing to do after school? You know, if I can get teachers to volunteer after school and in our summer programs, I think that would be wonderful. I, I want to be able to extend ourselves to make sure that academically we can, we can get our kids where we need to be. But, um, I just, I just want us to think about where we could be a year from now based on, um, learning interruption, which Dr. Mercer talked about, our kids being out two and three weeks. We can't control when kids get quarantined. We can't. I mean, that's just something that's unpredictable. We can't, and we, we can't predict learning interruptions, you know? Um, and this is part of us controlling what we can do, you know, by not letting them have another 12 weeks out, um, in the summer, especially when they've been on the hybrid system for over a year. And us really working on getting those academic gains and that grade level instruction. And so, um, we're very blessed, um, you know, to have what we have as, as teachers and educators. And, um, I respect all of your, uh, comments and everything you've said, but I'm just really concerned about our students and, um, and the student achievement of the district long-term based on COVID-19, learning interruption, and the summer slide.
Okay, uh, one more question here and then we'll go back to here with us. Um, Amber J. asks, ask, you know, how, how are we going to pay for it if the district is struggling financially? And let's just be crystal clear about that. If you look at any of our financials for months, we've been investing or planning to invest millions of dollars in capital improvements alongside of funding all the opportunities that need to be provided for students' development, along with buying all the computer books and all the things that we've done. Um, so this district is nowhere close to be struggling, uh, financially. And, you know, we report our financials every, every single month. Um, and so, you know, we are doing extremely well. Where does the money come from? Well, as Dr. Labat had mentioned earlier, you know, we have summer feeding dollars that come in, we have Title I dollars. We have other federal dollars that are also on a separate report that the board showed, uh, puts out for, for public review every single month that show those federal dollars that we have that would go into this intercession, uh, to pay for those different types of remediation or other, uh, sources should, uh, the modified calendar. And if they're not, uh, if the modified calendar is not selected and we go to the traditional, they'll still be used in summer school. They'll be used in other parts of furthering education in support of the students in the school district. Um, and so those documents are very available should anyone want to look at them, uh, during meetings or any other time. They're accessible online or can be delivered to them. So, um, Ms. Woodard? Blake Reynolds? Welcome.
Good evening, um, I'm the art teacher at Columbus Middle School, uh, my name's Blake Reynolds. And, uh, I have been the art teacher for, at, uh, CMS for 10 years and have, and thoroughly enjoy my job. I love what I do. Um, one of the, I just want to point out a, a few things because there's, some of the speakers have been very, uh, succinct and, and, uh, made some great points. From the perspective of somebody that has worked in summer programs pretty much my entire adult life and even before them, I've taught gymnastics, dance, Taekwondo, I've taught gymnastics, dance, Taekwondo, animation, arts, name it. I've taught it during the summer program. And one of the things that cannot be replicated outside of the summer is being able to hyper-focus and intensely work on a certain skill before COVID, so BCE before COVID era. We had a some animation program that I was able, the German teacher and I were able to produce a year's worth of animation. And it's, and, and a month. And I, and I, and I teach it as a class as well, and I can tell you there is no substitute, but it's not just animation. The, the other programs will have, will suffer because of that. Band is one of them that will get hit with that. There is no replication for what you can do when you can focus that summer program. Most of my memories as a child is those programs that I participated in. It is, you, you don't only grow academically or even in the, just the skills, but socially, being able to kind of step away from that nine-to-five routine that we kind of train the kids for. Which kind of leads to my next point, the nine, we are moving away from a college, you know, format that the college uses. Which I feel like is a bit odd. And we're moving toward more of a factory setting. We are taking away the, the summers and that time that kids have to be kids to go and visit family members. We're making decisions that will ultimately permanently and long-term change the way kids develop. They will not, they will not have that time to go to their dads during the summer or their uncles or see their grandparents the way they do during the summer. And that will permanently change the relationships they have with their own family. That's not trivial. That is something that we, we cannot replicate. And the, I also, you know, where we talk about students using the time during the summer. And I don't feel like I've gotten a, a adequate response to how that would work. This is poverty. That's just a fact. And we are taking away another two-month period where many teachers use that time to do other things. To supplement their income. Now, the other thing that I would like to address is we have had fantastic summer programs. And then we've had summer programs that have, have been okay. But I don't understand why we're not focusing on the summer program that we already use that already solved the problem. If you're talking about the summer supply, the only problem with that is, is you know, the amount of students that go during the summer, that was said that there was, there was a small issue with that. What is the solution to that? Making those intermittent, burning up throughout the, in the, in the middle of the year, I, is there a solution to that? Is that problem solved by just breaking it up in different areas? And if there, if, if you are saying that that's why it's, they're somehow magically solved, I would like to know why. What issues are we solving? Because we do have challenges that we need to overcome. But what are we, what are we solving? I, I always like to look at the core of the issues. Like, why are we choosing to go this route? And if there is, if, if that, if the data was, was clear, I wouldn't be standing here. But I am standing here, but that isn't clear. Do we know what our problems are? Do we need to take a step back and figure out why, why do we have the academic issues at CMSD? Why do we have such a high teacher turnover rate? And if those issues are being solved, how are they being solved? Because I want to know precisely, not just that it's going to be solved, but how is it going to be solved? Exactly how? And I have not heard that so far. So it makes me nervous. And I, and that's, that's about it. That's, I just would like those answers, you know, some answers to those questions specifically. And to understand that despite what the, you know, how we move forward, that, that summer that we're taking away, there are consequences that we can't just overlook. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Blake has participated in several of our summer programs and has done a great job with Wonder Media with our students. I hope that saying that we're having intercession does not make anybody feel that we would negate you in summer programs. Because where we are now, especially with learning interruptions, we would have to have some type of extensive summer program depending on budget, especially this summer. And so I, I don't want us to feel that the long-term, that what the arts are talking about, that we would not be able to extensively offer some type of program this summer. Especially because we, we will be receiving other federal funds to deal with student achievement issues because we are a Title I school. So the intercessions would not substitute for a, a summer program. It's not an end or it would be contingent on budget and need and recruitment. Some of the things that Blake talked about as far as recruitment of students in summer school. Like I said, we, we generally start the recruitment process and the application process for summer school between February and March, mid-March. We start planning that, trying to get information out to parents, tell them to sign up because we can only hire teachers based on the number of students that show up. And from there, we, we do, we've, we've already started a programming based on either our benchmark data or previous data that the student has taken in math and reading in order to determine who will be invited to summer school. Last year, we invited everyone and did it online. And so from there, we also always make sure that we include some type of enrichment with Wonder Media for our students that don't need academic enrichment. So that's always been a part of what we've done as a district since I've been here. And while the research, and I, I did say this at the center here, is that while the research doesn't conclusively talk about the modified calendar benefits, the, there is significant research about the impact of learning loss when students do not receive instruction. The issue is when students don't receive any instruction between ten to twelve weeks, that is, is huge. We, we start back in August, you know, we have to give them back in routine. We have to go over academic expectations. And we spend the first four to five weeks remediating based on what they've lost over the summer. So we, we start off catching up and then we get into the academic standards and remediation and we go from there. And then we start the hamster wheel all over extensively with those students, especially in the summer. Are not exposed to enrichment activities or don't go to summer school. Over time, that, that leads to kids being a grade level, one and two grade levels behind. So there is significant data of us understanding what some of our problems are as it relates to academic achievement in the school district. Another big part of what we're doing is early literacy and we're, we're working to problem solve that with letter training and some more intensive academic support and DE and retraining. So we just have several issues. We, we didn't have a multi-tiered support system until I arrived here as superintendent. We didn't have a way of supporting our students if they did have deficiency. We were expelling our students and putting them out of school and it affected our dropouts. So we, we are doing things academically to support our students. And I'll go back to my previous statement, but as we do this with us having a class of two hundred students every year, you got to remember it's a shot clock. So these kids that are in sixth and seventh and eighth grade, the thirty percent of them, I would say forty percent of them that are two grade levels behind or three grade levels behind. If they're in sixth, seventh and eighth grade, if they're not on grade level when they start taking those subject area tests in ninth grades, we got to know what it is. When I look at the third, the number of kids that we had three grade levels below in sixth, seventh and eighth grade, the thing that I see is if we don't do the things we need to do in that those three years, they're going to be dropouts. And right now, our graduation rate is between seventy and eighty percent. So twenty to twenty-five percent of our kids are dropping. That's been steady the last three, four years. That's the norm. And it, it may not be a kid you know, but twenty-five percent of our kids dropping out every year. You know, and a lot of it has to do with achievement. If they can read by third grade. If they're, if they're behind in sixth, seventh and eighth grade this significantly, you know, I, I want us to be able to look at something to try to do. Because our shot clock, we, we made it through our shot clock. Somebody supports us. We have a degree. We have, you know, that some of the things we need in order to be successful. I just think about the kids that get out of high school. You know, and don't have the opportunity or even more, the kids that, that drop out. You know, because a lot of the behavior and things we deal with is because our kids have not achieved academically, have not met grade level standards. And, and, and to our, we, that's just an important part of what we do as educators. We want to be able to provide that support. We want to be able to provide the options to excel academically. And I, and I, twenty-five percent is tremendous. That, that's a lot of kids. And even to our kids that have high school diplomas, we want to be able to, and, and, you know, offer more enrichment activities to make sure they're college educated. And give them more options so that they can leave the skills or what they need academically to go to a two-year-old person. It's just our priority. So even though we may not agree that when we go to school, I am sure we can all agree that we want to improve student achievement.
Mr. Eric James?
Good evening. I'm, I'm, I want to speak honestly from the heart. I commend my colleagues that, you know, work in the same department as I and some of my band parents that has spoken. With more something more fair. Really appreciative of speaking up, not just their own basketball program, but I'm responsible for CMSD. But for those of y'all that still don't know, I am the director of band for the school district. And I'm speaking from the heart because as one of the visible and active programs in the district. My concern comes from change. The one program that has, in my opinion, suffered because of change. I've been in the district since the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. And all those years except for this year, I taught at the middle school at Ponte High School. That first year I was here, literally in the month of August, right after school started. There was a reading initiative that the superintendent Ben wanted to push in the K through sixth grades. And what ended up happening for us as a program, we had to consolidate eighty-seven students. Into one class. And of course, even with two directors trying to teach beginning band, that is a challenge. In most school districts, there are at least two or three directors when they have numbers like that. In, 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 in separate class sections. Ms. Peddic in a test, we, we had to share the auditorium at times in order to get instruction. And then even then, our instructions suffered. Continuing on with change in that same year. Well, I'm sorry, in the following year, in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, we moved from the seven-period day to the four-by-four block schedule. That was an immediate impact on our program because they, that forced our high school students to choose. Granted, we understand that not every kid is planning to be a professional musician. And our job is to support them and prepare them to pursue whatever it is that they desire to be when they graduate from high school, when they become part of society. And the numbers, through the school. And because of that, they're being forced to choose and they couldn't be, not to be a part of that. From that year until last year, we've literally seen the band numbers drop from one hundred and forty students performing. To this, even down to this year, even with the COVID pandemic going on, to forty-four kids performing at the high school. And even fewer at the middle school. And I'm, I'm bringing, I'm bringing all of these statistics up because we, we're mentioning data. And, you know, we, we're, we're dealing with things where then it's not necessarily concrete data. There's still questions about the data. Let me look, the, the reason I'm bringing up this opportunity, the, the, the issue with change is that this changed for the modified calendar. And I understand, you know, I was actually listening on the live stream before I came. And I, you know, Dr. Labat said in the letter, talked about how, you know, the athletic department supported the modified calendar. Well, I can be honest and tell you that the band, the band staff did not. We were, we were the one program that did not because we've seen the change. And we've seen the effect of change and this is going to further changes. As the, the previous speakers talked about, yeah, the summer programs conflict. They're going to conflict, you know? Granted, I know there are many ways that we can work around that because just like when there are opportunities when the kids are in school. I know my, my band students have, have had that opportunity. They've gone and represented our school district and honor bands and competitions and what have you. And I know there's ways that, you know, that can be approved for them to continue to participate even with the earlier start date with school year. But that still takes away from those kids. They have to make a choice. Unfortunately, yeah, even though I have some of the, the top, top academic students in my program, I also have the students that have to choose whether they can work or not. And not to be, and, and have to give up the opportunity to contribute to something bigger than themselves. And an opportunity that they can use to pursue post, post-secondary opportunities with music or with other academic opportunities. And they see band as, as a possible avenue. We, you know, we, we, we all talk about porn and I've had the opportunity to talk to the band director at porn. For their, for their program, this calendar hurt them just as bad. Prior to them implementing the, this modified calendar, they were a sweet state band program. Which means in marching evaluation, concert evaluation, sight-reading evaluation, they got superiors from every adjudicator they performed in. They had students just like ours that would compete in honor bands and so on and so on and things like that. And honestly, speaking, speaking with them, I'm scared for my program. I'm already trying to come up with ways to try to recruit kids to come and be a part of the band from sixth through twelfth grade. I must, my, my band staff, we, we're coming up with different things. But this kind of change is going to put another hindrance on it. And my concern is not just for my program. I think about other programs where people are literally at the point where like we're begging kids, hey, come, come be a part of this. And, and the kids that want to be a part of it can't be. Hey, come, come be a part of this. And, and the kids that wanna be a part of it can't be. And then now we're gonna have more to have to make this choice. And that's just one of my concerns. Uh, you know, these kind of changes, especially in, in this, anywhere we put it, it's still abrupt. And it takes more planning because it's, it's especially for a program where you are as the, as the body that, that employees have an expectation to be, have a quality program. And no matter what size the program is, we will always produce quality. But we will always underserve kids that want to be a part of something greater. Another concern that I have. Uh, and I, and again, this is in conversation with, uh, the director in Corinth. We have to, we, we, the kids are gonna have to make another sacrifice. You know, uh, and the staff rule as well. We have I'll use the fall because with band, band is year round. It's not just a season like any other athletic activity. We have something going on year round. And it's the same thing, uh, for drama, uh, and a lot of other the performance arts or performance activities. We are actually having to take two or three weeks away from kids because now we don't have that summertime. We won't have as much time in the summer. So say for instance, potentially in the football season. We got three or four more games to, uh, three, four days going on while there's a break going on. And now, and on top of that, we have our own competition going on at the exact same time. So what I was, what was suggested to me in order for us to to, to, to justify that time that we would actually need to, in the sacrifice of time in that break because the staff loses a break, the kids lose a break, is that we treat the band like it's a club. And when I was told about that, you know, with clubs, there don't, there's no requirement for them to participate. Uh, and then in regards to the staff, we were told that, you know, uh, like we talked about in intercession, they would get the twenty-five dollars per hour. I know for my band staff. All, uh, three out of the four, uh, I'm sorry, three out of five members of the band staff have master degrees. And have, uh, at least six years of teaching experience or more. If you go by the one hundred eighty-seven day contract that we have. And you consider the twenty-five dollar an hour, and I'm assuming that'd be four hours a day would be the expectation. That's us almost a hundred and fifty dollar difference in what we would get paid daily as contract employees on our contract days. And then we, you know, there's always the mention of us receiving supplements and the coaches receiving supplements and the club sponsors getting supplements. By definition, supplement is, is, is responsibility. That's not actually work, the actual workouts. You know, and we're expected to sacrifice time away from our family. I'm from Louisiana. My in-law still lives in Louisiana. My father lives in Natchez, Mississippi. So I'm having to take more time away from my family from the kids that can't see their grandparents. Because I'm making a sacrifice and I'm asking the kids to make a sacrifice from, to take time away from their families and our opportunities to, to, to come together and just visit their families from less far and beyond. And for some cases, yeah, they, they're sacrificing time for employment. Because now in any, in this session, they got a chance to work full-time. But now they don't because they still got, they still got, they choose to be a dedicated band member. And of my, some of my kids, they rely on that income. Their families rely on it. So the band, the band directors in Corinth. They get two hundred and forty day contracts plus. Or two hundred and twenty, depending on what position they're assigned. And my last conversation, there were, there were some works of them incentivizing something for those kids that make that sacrifice. Literally next week, we have to submit a video about March first. That's usually anytime between March and mid-April, every year. It is never the same. And that means that's a potential risk for our kids. And it's the same thing for drama program because their events are never, they're, they're around the same time, but they're never the exact same date. I think about that because I have a child that's, you know, and, and, and I'm speaking as a district person, I'm speaking as a parent too. I'm a father. I have three children that have graduated Columbus, uh, Midas School District. I have a ninth grade son. He's been a student athlete, played football soccer, and currently on the tennis team, and he's also in the band. And I think about how much that's, that he's having to sacrifice right along with me because he can't. I mean, mom is working, mom doesn't hardly get a chance to see him because he's gone. And I understand for, for kids, it's a choice, it's an elective. But at the same time, for both, for those of us that have to be supervising these children and teaching these children and leading them to be successful because the same expectation is still set here by this body that the people that you employ, you expect high quality performance. And I think that, that we need to consider if we're gonna be moving toward this, there's gotta be some changes even in the way teachers are compensated. You know, we can talk about the intersection pay and all that, but in actuality that, you know, teachers are, are, are giving up more time, you know, having to make major adjustments in their lives. And right now is you're still only working one hundred eighty-seven days. That's not the case. And even for some of these teachers in subject areas that have to go and get these professional developments and go and get all of this other, uh, criteria and the ones that are also dependent on second jobs. I'm still a professional musician. You know, summertime is when I make my supplemental income. I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I apologize for getting a little more personal about it, but my program is personal to me. And my family is personal to me because through everything that we've been through, they are the ones that have to suffer because I've given my time and my dedication and my love to make sure that this program is successful. And everybody that works with me on my band staff is the same way. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to a close, I promise. I know I'm getting a little off track, I'm getting a little emotional about it. I apologize. With this also takes away the flexibility to actually organize the program. At the current state that you all have us, we get a hundred eighty-seven day contract, we get a supplement. We can plan and organize and make this, and adjust our times as, as, as individual members on the staff to ensure that, uh, we are meeting the needs of kids and we're meeting the expectations of the district. We can plan our trainings in the summers, uh, we can plan ahead for the year. We literally, we can have one meeting or one or two meetings rather, and plan for the entire year. And we have long meetings as a staff to plan for this. And what this modified calendar does, it takes away our flexibility because now again, we no longer have that time in the brain. Cause now you're stipulating, okay. You, okay, you know these activities are there. So now, hey, make sure this, this stuff is prepared. I mean, we gotta take those Monday to Thursday of the breaks of those two or three weeks and make sure that they're ready for Friday and Saturday. So we don't longer have that flexibility when we know we have a continuous system already in place that is already functional, that is already working and is already successful. And as Ms. Pettick brought up earlier, the war is proof that it's successful. Now, granted, you know, I, I understand we, we're concerned about the learning gap in that time period. And that's legitimate, you know. I've, you know, kids, the kids need that. The kids need to, we need to bridge that gap. However, I feel like we should be looking at other alternatives other than this modified calendar. Uh, I had an opportunity to teach in a district years ago, uh, where schools, the, the schools met four days a week from seven AM to four PM. And on Fridays, every Friday was a half day. Their school was out of, they would go from seven to eleven and the school was successful. And they were addressing the same issues that were comparable to what we have in C M S D. And I just think that we need to look at some other alternatives other than the modified calendar overall. Because student performance is number one. That's the priority and I, I commend you guys uh, for even presenting this. However, right now, we don't, the data, the data is questionable. There's too many conflicts. And I feel like we, we need to look a little bit further. Thank y'all again for this platform, this opportunity to speak and, uh, I just appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Mister James.
Thank you, Mister James. I think some of the, the question related to the arts and to, um, a band, uh, namely band, uh, I think that, you know, overall with covid nineteen, there's already substantial issues with participation, um, with our students. And, uh, we just have continued to work on those, uh, issues. Uh, thank you for acknowledging that, that student achievement was, is a priority in our district. Um, and, and I think some of the things about the choices, um, has to do with our students choosing between work and extracurricular activity. Um, our scheduling and just all the changes that have transpired probably before I got here, you know, over the years and what you've had to deal with as a band director with all the changes. And as administrator and former teacher, I understand having to go through that and, and, um, trying to build the program. And so I, I really think during covid nineteen, all of our teachers and our C M S D family, it's about being in a pandemic and having another change. And I understand that. And not the uncertainty of knowing if, if the change is, is going to be beneficial to us in our school district. Uh, and I would, I would say again, that the research is there on learning loss in summer, uh, without obstruction. It's, it's not, a lot of research on modified calendar is very limited because it had taken away that it's taken now all across the country because everybody's in the same situation. Everybody's stressed out. Everybody's dealing with learning interruptions. Everybody's dealing with achievement gap issues. And so, uh, people are looking at proactive ways to mitigate the situation. So I feel like the modified calendar, it has taken a, a, a big national swing towards being an intervention to some of these learning interruptions. Um, and talking to the band director at Corinth, I wanna thank you as a teacher for calling them, getting their input um, and discussing those, those other, uh, issues. I do wanna work with you about working on a recruitment to discuss this since I've been here. We've looked at numbers, um, we've had, you know, discussions of how we can recruit more band students in our program, extend performances and continue to build the program. Uh, I, I feel like we can do that, um, you know, as a, as a team and work to try to, our students that are more musically inclined, I would like to be in band. Um, I like the, a parent that, that came earlier to talk about just with our graduation rate and academics being a priority. Kids do have to make a choice, you know. Uh, you know, I always tell people sometimes it's easy to be, um, focused on ourselves if we, you know, or focused on other things, but we really gotta think about, a lot of our kids are hungry, you know, I mean, a lot of our students have to work and, and are in those situations and that has been complex. Very complex. I mean, we have dealt with that at the high school. We've had a lot of students that have just dropped out to work, you know, for Survivor. Um, and we just wanna be able to give more options to them period academically, keep them in school, improve our graduation rate. Um, if you use these intercessions during the year to improve their credit recovery. So some of these students that may fail a class or may need another course in order to graduate, they're ready to apply that. I do wanna just say too, I know that a lot of people have made comments about the block schedule and I'm sure that was a huge change on the district prior, but a lot of that has to do with giving students multiple chances to complete graduation classes before graduation. So, um, giving them a high school diploma is the best avenue for them to be college career and a list of prepared. And I know it was a major adjustment and I, I understand that, but, you know, we look at our students in sixth, seventh, eighth grade and we look at thirty percent of them being three grade levels behind, being a sixth grader and being on a third grade math or reading level, that's serious. You know, and, and the thing I want to remember, it is a shot clock. You know, between that sixth grade and then getting to ninth grade, taking those subject area tests. If they don't make it, they, they don't graduate. And that's a lot of time to make up at the middle school academically. Um, and we are working with the systematic problems. I know that Mister Blake mentioned that. Um, and I'm sorry, I do know most of my teachers in the district, so I can call them by name, but, um, you know, Mister Blake did mention that, you know, what are some other things to, there are things that are happening simultaneously. Um, a lot of our pre-K teachers have done letter trainings. We are doing things to work on the achievement gap. But the thing we have to realize, I keep saying twenty-six, something about a hundred, but forty kids dropping out every year, that's twenty percent. Okay, twenty-five percent is fifty kids out of each class. That's a lot of kids. And that's where we are. Our graduation rate is between seventy-six, seventy-five percent, well, seventy percent depending on the year and eighty percent. That's a lot of kids. And, and we've been in this situation as a district. I say we, I haven't been here the whole time, but it's we now, you know. We've been in this situation for eleven years. Eleven years, over a decade. Over a decade. And so, um, I don't want y'all to feel that I'm throwing anything at you as much as I'm trying to help mitigate simultaneously several things to improve the academic achievement of our students, to provide more resources and, and really have grade level instruction, then be able to get remediation or acceleration during that time and going right back to instruction. And I know the change is hard, but I, I, I really feel like, um, as a district and a C M S D family, that, um, anything we, we do now is hard. I mean, even, even decisions that we're gonna have to make in the next couple of weeks, they're, they're hard. And during this time, this is what superintendents we have to do. I've talked to superintendents all over the country that are making these bold decisions because the hard thing to articulate is what crisis is in and how bad it, it, it will work in a year from now. It, it, I mean, and, and, and the thing is, we gotta look at it in terms of kids and the shot clock. You know, we're not, we're not gonna get a second chance. And when M D, and, and, you know, I respect them and I believe in accountability. When, when that is back on, we won't have, um, any forgiveness. We will not be held harmless. I also think about our kids that have not tested or have that altered means of testing that are going out to the world to work for graduation. Or our kids that are gonna be in fifth grade in two, in two years that didn't take the third grade gate that may not have been on grade level. Right? Because we didn't test. There is some critical data, student achievement points that we really have to be concerned about. And I know y'all are tired and I am extremely tired with you and I understand what y'all are going through. It's, it's stress enough just to have a mask on and worry about getting covid. You know, that's stress in itself. Um, but you, you, please understand that this is a mitigation for, um, improving student achievement. I can tell you that I'm one of, of four educators, uh, my parents are educators. And my sister worked for Chicago Public Schools and she was, she was Daisy. She came up to her superintendent during her state coordinator meeting and told her the modified count was the worst thing that they could have done, that they, we shouldn't do it. And she called me crying and I, well, September I told, I said, what's wrong? She's like, I need to apologize because I really liked this break. I've been able to, to get my mind together. I've been able to really look at where my students are and come up with an action plan. I've been able to relax. I've been able to go see mom and dad. And so she had the same fears and anxiety during a normal year, right? It wasn't even a covid year, but when the process started, it was something that she really liked. And it was devastating when she had to leave, uh, 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 district with modified calendar when she went to Wisconsin. So just know from a firsthand stand for my family, I understand that change is difficult. And, and educators, we not people that like change. We just, we, we are routine people. And we like to know what's gonna happen and we're planning. And so, um, I, I definitely wanna let you know that I empathize with you. We will work with you to, um, improve the recruitment of our students into the band program. Um, I, I definitely want to let you know that I empathize with you and we will work with you to um, improve the recruitment of our students into the band program.
I just wanted to make uh, just a, a small request, uh, and I, and I think about now, I see Ms. Young and I see Mr. Sparks. You know, they, they were band parents, uh, they were, Ms. Young is currently a band. Uh, Mr. Sparks, you know, had, he had two children come through the band program and I want. Or I would like to request an audience with anybody either here on this board or within the administration. If there's a decision. To, to, to finally move forward with this modified program. With the arts departments. Please, uh. Let us, let us all sit down together and let's talk about the realistic expectations. Of the programs. You know, we want to make sure that we're still up to, to our standards uh, that we set forth for our students. And of course, you all are always going to expect the highest, but we, we need to sit down and be realistic because, you know. It's going to be a change, you know, and, and uh, a person once said that, you know, tradition is the illusion of permanence. Uh. And some things that we do traditionally may not work moving forward. And the, I, I think because we're the arts department and. You know, except for, for maybe one or two people, we're the, we're pretty much your, your, your experts in our fields for the district. And I think, you know, we, we speak to our building level administrators. And we, you know, we, we, we address our concerns and we talk about it, but a lot of times because we're the. Aside from the academic assess, we're primarily the things that's out front that represent the positive. Uh, or, or, or the, of, of some of the best things that go on in C M S D. It's only right and kind of fair that we try to find a common ground. Where we can still meet that expectation, but have to address the change and, and, and look at your expectations of us as well. You know, I, I just, I just feel like we should have that opportunity.
And, and James, I, I would definitely look forward to, um, whatever decision we made. We need to talk about the arts in the future, um, with Dr. Browning, Petty, you know, um, Mr. Blake. Um, I would love to do that, especially if we do move forward with the modified calendar, how do we look at things, how do we evaluate things? Some of the timing things that Mr. Blake talked about, I don't want. The arts of time feel like they're out of the field, but I'm, I'm a big advocate for the arts, um, a supporter of the arts and. Appreciate your feedback and so definitely would like to get your um, input, um, however we look for. Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you very much, Mr. James. Mr. Miko Turner. Welcome. Good evening.
Alright, so good evening, um, I've written down quite a few things, but I, I just want to start off by saying. Thank you all for this opportunity uh, for my colleagues to be able to express their point of views here tonight. Um, this has been an invaluable um. Opportunity for us and I just can't imagine you all having made a decision. At the February board meeting without having heard all of what you've heard today. And so, um. I, I've written down so much stuff and I don't want to, first of all, it's very cold in here and it makes me think about. You know, we talked about Honda, but why is it so cold in this authority? It's, it's really cold in here and that's something that we really need to be addressed. But you know, um.
I'm sorry, it's on our capital improvement plan, I can already.
But there's been so many comments that have been made tonight and, and I, I do want to um, take a moment to. Rebut something that was said at the board meeting and somebody else also mentioned it um, tonight. About me, about, about it being said, about me not reaching out about um, asking. About the modified calendar before the board meeting. Well, I did not reach out because I followed what I thought was the chain of command. And my concerns, I addressed them to my building level principal. And I was told that we would have the opportunity to discuss those concerns. But that opportunity did not materialize like it was expected. Yes, we did have that stakeholders meeting, uh, the very first one, but after then, that was it, there were no other opportunities to discuss this calendar. No other opportunity. And so I heard it being said that, um, there was some face-to-face dialogue. That was scheduled before this meeting and I'm just, where, where was that, when was that? Because I didn't, I, I wasn't privy to that and maybe I'm, I'm not looking on the right sites or something. But I didn't know about any other dialogue or any other opportunity except for the stakeholder presentation. That was on, uh, that was in January. One day in January and it was kind of like a recorded presentation, it wasn't a meeting like this. Um, retaliation and retribution. Whether or not you guys may, may not realize or not, teachers do fear speaking up. That's why we, we don't have a, a lot of uh, voices from us, because we do, well, I don't fear it. But we do fear it, we do fear speaking up because there is evidence. There is, there are things that have happened in the past when a teacher has spoken up. You're picked on, you're, now it's like a, a, every little thing you do is, is, is put under a microscope and you, and you're put on. Different plans and so forth, so there is a fear of speaking up. And I think that is something that does need to be, does need to be addressed. But when I originally came in here, my question is, what other options has the district considered before? The modified calendar, what else, what else was considered? Because yes, we have received all the articles that talk about the summer slide. And I read those articles as long as they are, I read the different articles that talk about the summer slide. And I did do my research as I said previously. And we know that data is on both sides about the effectiveness of the modified calendar. And we, we, you know, what other options have been discussed? I pulled up an article today and it talks about some other things that could be done in order to help with the achievement gap. That exists and those are things such as um. A late start for our high school students and extended learning time throughout the day. And also looking at, instead of being on semesters, being on trimesters and a four-day school weekend. Even talked about how, yes, in some countries, they have longer days. But then in some countries that are very, have a very effective educational system, they have even fewer days than what we have. So what other options have been, have been uh, considered besides the modified calendar? And I, I really, I really would like to know. Because I've heard a lot tonight and I, and I've kind of heard the same thing over and over again, to be honest, so what other options have been considered? Um, one big question that I have and I hope it can be, it can be answered is. Will the current school week that we have right now, will that be the same thing next year? Because I, I'm very concerned about that. I see my students two days a week, like I told you guys before, I teach chemistry. This past semester, the bulk of the essence of chemistry, the essence of chemistry. Had to be taught in about two weeks, stoichiometry, chemical reactions and balancing equations. Those students had to kind of teach that to themselves, I provided them with as many videos as I could. And my instruction, but they kind of had to teach themselves because of the way our school day is, our school week is set up now. So we, I see my students two days out of the week and even though I tell them. I need you to be online with me every day except for Wednesdays because we're doing professional development. But I need you to be online because I need to get this material to you, I cannot teach on Monday. The same thing and turn around and teach it on Thursday to a totally different group of students. And I think that we have not even addressed that because I think that that is where a whole lot of our academic loss is coming from now. Yes, COVID has just messed things up for us, but what we, what we're doing right now, in my opinion, it is not working. It is not working, I have two nieces who are in the school district, who are in the system now. They, they, one is a second grader and one is a third grader. And I feel, I am terrified for them because when they are not in school, they were virtual the first semester. But when they had the opportunity to come back to school, hybrid the second semester, they made that change, but it's still not enough. Because I see that those girls, those little girls who need that teacher instruction. It is not, it's not being provided as well as it can be at home, however, they need some of this, they need that, they need to be in the classroom. And so how will the modified schedule help us? How will it, how will that calendar help us? If we're going to be doing the same thing next year with the, with, with the date, so that's a big question, will we still have this same school week? Next year and then. If we are able to bring students back into the classroom in a traditional setting. Are we going to be able to meet CDC guidelines? Because I know my classroom, the way it's set up now, we can't. I have eleven desks in my room and that's about, and, and, and I'm telling you now, they're not six feet apart, I tried my best to get them six feet apart. They're not six feet apart like they're supposed to be. But, but my students, but thankfully, thankfully, I am able to spread the students out so they're not all sitting beside each other. But I do have a class that fills up that room and that's an issue for me. That's a concern for me. How are we going to have, you know, if, if we're bringing the kids back into the classroom, how are we going to make sure that we address those CDC guidelines? Right now, we're talking about students and, and, and the question of. Will next year's school week look like it does now? Today, we had our virtual and I'm so thankful and I pray that the, the sun shines and we're back into the classroom on Monday because this week. Of being at home because of inclement weather, it was horrible for me, for me personally. And so I, today I had, I taught three students during my third block of class, but I taught them just like it was a classroom full of thirty. But there were supposed to be more students than that, but they weren't there. How are we going to address that? How are we going to address students not being engaged? In place when they're supposed to be here? How is that going to be addressed? So there are so many other concerns, most of the students now, you, you take a look at the fact that we do have the opportunity for virtual learning. My students who are virtual, a good portion of them, when they are not, not just the virtual students. A good portion of the students, you know what they're doing from, from eight o'clock until three-ten when they're supposed to be in school, they're at work. They're working full-time jobs. I have a student, we had a conversation, she told me she works every day of the week except for one day, she gets one day off a week. And you know what, I can tell it because on those days that she's not sitting in my classroom, she is not doing her work. Because she's at work. And what's going to be done about that? How is the modified calendar going to fix those issues? And, and again, with the urgency of implementing it this year. So I'm looking forward to the breaks, to be honest, because I, to be honest, to be honest with you guys and I, I, I want to be as open and honest as possible. The comments that I see on the YouTube live and just the, the vibe that I've gotten, it, it really feels like to me that. Whatever we say is in vain because your mind is already made up. And the decision is going to be, we're going to adopt this modified calendar, so I am fixing my mind. I'll be on the modified calendar next year and I'm looking forward to the breaks because I, for one, I'm not working during intersections. I don't do summer school because that is my time to unwind. To figure out, okay, how do I move forward? Because a lot of people think that teachers have summers off. We don't have summers off, I spent my whole last summer doing an online class to make sure when we got back in school, I was prepared. To teach virtually when school started back and I still wasn't prepared. Because even though I did it online, I still had to get in the classroom and figure out what the heck I was doing. How was I going to use teams or how was I going to teach to these students? Who are at home and how were they going to see me? Because you know what, we didn't have what we needed in order to be able to come back and teach virtually. But I figured it out using my MacBook, how to turn that camera on so that the students can see me while I'm working on the board and how to interact with each other and I didn't. I didn't have that the first day, it took some time to learn that. But I, I'm just saying, it just seems like, I just, I don't understand why, if somebody could answer the question, I, I. And ask, and I didn't hear the first part of this, but asking, but what, reading the comments. We're going to have more than a summer loss when we have these three-week breaks. I feel it, I, let me tell you. I try not to teach a new concept on Friday because I feel like the students ain't going to remember it when they come back to me on Monday. And that's just over the weekend, so I only, I can only imagine a three-week break. What's going to happen over a three-week break for what I taught forty-five days before? And that three-week break, what's going to be there when they come back? What am I going to have to reteach? I think uh, our educational system needs, needs a rebound and we need to look at, look at our, our, our opportunities and. And what we're presenting to the students in our curriculum and so much other stuff and I hear us talking about. You know, these programs and providing these opportunities for students, why can't we provide them now? Why can't we provide them now? Why do we have to have a modified schedule to give them other opportunities? I'm working with the students in the coding academy and we don't have that many students right now, but each day, me and Ms. Hayes are trying to figure out. How can we get more students in this program? How can we be innovative and draw people into this program? Because it's an, an awesome opportunity, I even said to myself, I need to learn how to code because give me a couple of years and I'll be gone, I, I'm going to be, be somebody's code. And I'm serious, I'm serious. And why can't we offer that now? All of the stuff that's being said, why can't we offer it now? Why do you try to have a modified calendar in order for us to implement some of these programs? I mean, I, 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 again, I wrote a whole bunch of notes down here, uh, I think I covered most of what I, what I wrote. Um, but, but I just. I just feel like it's, we're rushing. I, I understand the, the. Why can't we, why can't we have the summer break for now be as the summer break normally is? And then when we start out, we try to figure out how to get those days that the modified calendar would have us. You know, figure out how to put those days, so, you know, put them, put the days back in somewhere else. And ease into a modified calendar. You know, we're, we are, we, when I said I was tired, when I said we were tired. I'm tired every day when I go home, this is something that we have, none of us have experienced before. And I am just drained to try to figure out, okay, how can I redo that? How can I get them to do this lift? How can I do this? How can, oh, I'm a chemistry teacher and I, I can, I can do layouts and that's what I love about chemistry. Doing experiments and showing my students different things, but how can I do that when they're at home? I'm, I'm, I have my MacBook and I'm trying to measure and show them at home, they're not getting that true experience. My biggest concern is how we are right now with COVID in our schedule. We need to fix this, we need to figure out how to get this right before we jump off into something else. I mean, I, I guess that's all that I have to say, but I just don't. One more thing, I don't understand the sense of urgency. What is it that the board needs to hear? What else do you need to hear? To understand that the, the, the teachers, and I wish there were more parents here. Because I guarantee you, I'm looking at those Facebook comments and they're not coming from our educators. I wish more parents would have come here to speak up, but what else do you need to hear to understand that? We are behind you because no matter what you decide, if you are an educator. If you are a true educator, no matter what is put before us, we rise to the occasion. We will do what you ask us to do, we will try our best to implement it with fidelity. But what else do you need to hear to understand that now is just not be time. For this calendar, we need more research, we need to see that this is going to work. The district from your sisters, from, from your sisters, the data from your sister district, where is that data? Did it improve them? What are their demographics? All we've heard about is Corin, 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 we are not Corin. We are not Corin, we are not, they have a totally different demographic than what we have. And I still go back to what I said before, their high school is an F. On the same, the same, the same testing that we have, so how does Corin show us what we need to do? And they're an F. I don't understand it. I, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Turner, for sharing. Dr. Watt, would you like to answer these questions, please?
And I think Dr. Childress addressed this, that after he had, um, the issues with NDE. When they recalibrated their test scores, that most of their schools were As and Bs. Um, and he did have to go to the Mississippi Department of Edu- Education and address those issues. There is no waiting to all of our programs. Um, like I said before, whatever creativity that our teachers come with, the support, whether it's coding. Whether it's a magnet school with, had violin lessons. You know, we have to, we have to get people that are willing to do that. But we are, um, a hundred percent supportive to our exploratory and creative programs for our students. And we are working diligently to be able to provide more resources to our students. So it's not a wait time, it's just a matter of time. And we continue to innovate to provide our students opportunities, um, both at the elementary and the secondary level. Um, the issue with face-to-face, um, the statement was made, I just wish we could have done some of this face-to-face. But I could not do it between November and December with the amount of death and COVID cases we had in the, in this district and in the community. It just would not be feasible. Um, I'm happy that we're able to do a face-to-face meeting, I operate better face-to-face, um, in January where our numbers have been so low. Four days a week with professional development. Um, that was a mitigation for our teachers to be able to learn the technology with the hybrid schedule to get our students back in school. Um, the four-day-a-week now, um, going into our current schedule is not, has not been put in the schedule to have the, uh, the Wednesday. Professional development. Um, we addressed several issues with, at the high school academic issues. I was in several classrooms during this week. You know, in classes that I usually saw, uh, ten kids, I saw three, four. Um, that's another issue and I've talked to, um, my team about attendance during virtual days, some things we have to work out. But overall, as a district, our ADA has gone down. Our, our students are not attending school regularly. And that was something to discuss extensively at the, at the stakeholder meeting and another reason for grave concern. Um, as it relates to student achievement in the next couple of years. Um, our students are required to go to school two days a week and then virtually three days a week. I can tell you that has not been consistent and it has a lot of implication to the kids, the students that are three, three years behind, two or three years behind academically. Um, what else has been considered? We have a lot of things that are happening now, like I said, with early, um, literacy, uh, letters training. Doing a strong early initiative for, for twelve literacy integration. Um, through a grant with the Mississippi Department of Education will be, which will be implemented in December. Um, academically, we continue to, to focus on standards-based learning. Um, continue to work on professional development to improve our students. Um, I have seen an improvement in, in our science and, um, integration, especially pre-K eight. Um, with our students, something that I hadn't seen the previous year and glad to see during a pandemic. Okay, so other options with summer slide, um, just related to calendars. Um, we, we wanted to address the learning loss and the research to support the learning loss. Because, um, of our student population and things that we're dealing with with learning loss. Um, and like I said before, the things that, that I've spoke about before is related to the achievement gap, really relates to the shot clock. Um, in, in forty and fifty students dropping out every year. And what we're experiencing as far as some of the frustration that Ms. Turner has discussed with academic achievement, students not attending school regularly. I just don't wanna be on the other side of this next year. And we're having more dropouts and our students are not achieving at high levels because of the attendance issues and because they're not going to school regularly. So we are looking to mitigate that situation. We have been looking at the attendance and, and I'll say this, the attendance at the secondary level has been, has been growing. It, it has been growing. Um, and we feel like some of that is because our students at the secondary level are employed. And they are able to, um, I, I, I would say interpret the pandemic and COVID nineteen more intensely. So I just think they're dealing with things at a different level, um, than our elementary students, um, but still a lot of SEL problems. Some of the high-performing jurisdictions around the world, uh, in China, they have forty kids in a classroom, you know? They have an eight-year teacher preparation program. So this is not apples-to-apples on how they go to school every year. Because there's a, there's a lot of things that are different in Germany, in, 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 in China, in Singapore, in other places. And so, the American system is very different. Um, we teach all, which is, you know, that, that's Achilles' heels, but that's something we should be proud of, you know? We, we take the kids with special needs, we take the kids with emotional needs, we take the kids that have deficits. And we, as educators, we try to teach them all. And so, it's, it's good sometimes to compare ourselves to high-performing jurisdictions or, uh, people around the world, but it's very different. Um, as it relates to apples and oranges with teacher preparation and other issues related to, um, how they, um, deliver instruction. Engagement, you know, um, this technology world, I'm very happy that we have a one-to-one initiative and our kids are learning, um, virtually. But there's nothing that can substitute a child being in front of a teacher. And, um, I talked about socialization, social-emotional, um, some of our students being more despondent. And we're just gonna have to make some sacrifices to make sure they, um, they get back into school. Um, and that's going to, I mean, it's a tough decision, but like I said, attending that spelling bee and watching our students, understanding what's happening in the community. Um, looking at the strong implications of, of, of learning loss along with COVID nineteen and learning interruptions. You know, listening to Dr. Mercer saying that his kid missed four weeks of school or four to five weeks of school, especially these kids. Without any instruction because of learning interruption, we may experience that for the next two years. The next two years. Um, with the pandemic. And so, um, part of what we, we do when we make decisions as leaders, we have to be proactive. And like I said, I don't wanna be on the other side of this. Um, you know, we, we've been a district that has struggled academically. I feel that we're doing some great things, um, to improve, uh, student outcomes. And this is just one of the ways that we can help, that'll serve our students. I thought about, um, giving a student that came into pre-K or kindergarten that was not prepared for pre-K and kindergarten. Which a lot of our students do come in our district unprepared. Um, and that student, when they come in, if they are behind us being able to help those students during an intercession. And then them going right back to grade-level instruction instead of waiting till the end of the year to put them in summer school. When they're already behind and having learning loss. Those are the significant gains of educators we really have to think about, um, as it relates to student achievement. Um, and let's see. Is there anything else on this?
Um, I was gonna say that one of the questions that was posed, why can't we implement the programs without the modified calendar?
And, and with the program, I think we've always been open. You know, we've been, we're doing coding, we're getting ready to do the AP program, which you missed Taylor, Tiel, this summer. Um, so I, I think the school, the school district has been very progressive and looking at twenty-first century schools and implementing, implementing programs. Um, and we have done it on a traditional calendar and we will continue to do so. One of the things that's been important for the board trustees and myself is that we've gotten away from the magnet school choices. Well, it's not because we don't wanna do things at the magnet school level, um, as it relates to the, the focus of the school. It's just that when we have kids that are two and three grade levels behind, we gotta focus on that. And that's important. And so, in general, we have to do that in summer, right, at the end of the year. And so, we really wanna be able to provide that, um, that instruction during the year. And work on those gaps during the year with our, with our students. And, and be able to provide enrichment. We do provide enrichment in summer school, we just don't get a lot of students to participate. And I really feel like by May, everybody's around. I mean, every, when we test, it's just a lot. May is just not a time. I mean, we really, really have to work hard and recruit teachers from March to May to try to, to do summer school. And it's hard to get students to do it. Um, especially because we go very, very strong until we assess. And, you know, it's, it's just a very, very stressful time. So, um, is there anything else? Yes, okay, that's the four-day-a-week. So the reason why we, the biggest reason we did the four-day-a-week this year was to help support our teachers with the hybrid schedule. With the virtual learning and for professional development. Um, I, I will say this, I did mention this in the Senate hearing, that was something that, um, I've seen a significant difference in. You know, teachers having that, that, that time during the week. But I do also understand the urgency of our students receiving more consistent instruction five days a week. Um, there, there are things that we are looking at as far as professional development on Wednesday and things that we can do to be more creative. And, um, as it relates to giving students, I mean, teachers more support during that, um, during the year. But they was, it's mainly done to mitigate, y'all get more training for, for, uh, virtual learning and, and technology.
So with the, with the four-day, the four-day-a-week, I wasn't talking about how we have it now, but I, I will say this much. And I can't speak for my colleagues because I haven't asked them this question. But I know having the Wednesday, having the Wednesday, uh, to do, to catch up on the calling of parents. And, and having the professional development and working with our colleagues is a big help. And that's not something that we would like to see go away. My concern again is bringing the students back into the classroom. I know a lot of us have, have fears over, um, possibly being, possibly being, um, exposed to COVID. Because of a higher number of students being in the classroom. But if we have the funding, that we say we have funding for certain things, then why can't that funding go towards the smaller classroom size? Also, with the funding and with our teacher shortage. You know, the district offered a, um, has offered the math and science bonus and, and it was, it was really nice to get that bonus, um, this year. Um, but if we have those types of programs, why can't we have programs for our assistant teachers? To, because we do have a teacher shortage. Why can't we use the funding? And I don't know how funding is gonna work, I know it has special, this goes for this and this goes for that. But some of the possible innovations that this district could do, why not have funding to help our assistant teachers go back to school? And get that certification, kinda like the William Winter Loan Program. And so, when they go to school and they have to come back and put that time back in our school district. That would help us grow our, um, pool of qualified teachers. You know, helping our own with, within the district itself, helping our own teachers possibly get higher degrees. Or, uh, teachers who have bachelors, improve their skills and sending them off. You know, I, I did hear something earlier about not getting requests to go on field trips and things like that in the past years. Well, because it has been frowned upon, and I'm not saying frowned upon by you. But it has been frowned upon in the past about going different places and it was reserved for a select group of people. Also, you mentioned that eleven years, I wrote that down. This district has, has, um, had, has been a, a poor, a low-performing school district for eleven years. Has anybody ever thought about, because teachers have not had input for eleven years? Because I don't know how many, I, I consider myself a teacher who, an educator who tries to be in the know. And try to keep up on things that are going, uh, around, are going around across the state and just. And, and I, I am one who loves to implement new stuff. And I, I haven't been involved in committees and, and different groups. To discuss changes that could possibly happen here in this school district. And I don't think a lot of teachers have had that input. And maybe if we had some input, then maybe we could come up with programs and ideas. In order to, uh, improve where we are. If, improve our test scores and improve our student performance and decrease the dropout rate and so forth. And also with those innovative programs, there are things that with us now, having all students a one-to-one. They now have opportunities to get, just like we have, we've had students in the past, we have our dual enrollment program. So you're getting a, uh, um, you're getting an associate's degree along with your high school diploma for some students. But then, why can't we have students who are getting in, graduating high school earlier and getting on out? And, and, and that helps to improve our career and college readiness. I mean, there are just so many things that I think if we just sat down and had a voice in it and tried to explore, then we could improve our district. Offer, you, coding is here, yes, the Tiel's program is coming, but there, there are other things that the district could offer. The, the, going back to interventions, the money that is going, the cost of a, of a teacher, um, going to an intercession. Why can't those funds be put into place now for after-school programs? Not voluntary because our time is valuable as well. We have families to go home to also. But compensate us for staying after school to help those students, we've had those kinds of programs in the past. Why don't we have those programs now? I mean, there's just, we just need a consistent, constant dialogue, not just in a time of crisis or when. We're at a point where there's something going on and we, we don't all disagree, I mean, all agree with it. We need to have continuous dialogue throughout this district to get our input on, because as it's been said over and over again. We are the ones who are in front of those students every day. Does our opinion not count? Does our input, does it not matter? And that is the sense, that's the feeling that we have. We, we're not valued, it doesn't matter, what we say does not matter. If you read those face, those YouTube, uh, comments, there are so many people who says the board has already made their mind up. At the end of the day, we feel like we do not matter. And we should not feel that way. We should not feel that way.
I, I wanted to address the teacher pipeline. We are working, and I mentioned this earlier, um, on rebranding the Hump Facility, which will be completed, um, December of this year. Um, part of the innovation of that program is to, um, have an articulation agreement with the Mississippi University for Women. That extensively, uh, recruits not only high school students into the field of education, but also work with our teacher assistants. To have a lab, much like a partnership school in Starkville. Um, we, um, we've worked on it for the last two or three months. We do expect to have some kind of, um, endowed program to support, um, teachers that are going, teacher assistants that are going to teacher programs. And recruiting our high school students who are interested in education. And starting a dual enrollment program early with NUW. Or going to the childcare development program because there is a, um, a, um. Collaboration with MD, MEW of taking those CTE units into an elementary education background. So all of that is in the works, but they just, it just takes time. Some of the other innovations that we've done, um, you know, we try to do things strategically with technology, really focusing on coding. Uh, we have some other innovation with the Hump Facility that we are preparing for our students to give them more options. Um, we've done a lot of programming at the secondary level, um, just because it's just easier to implement at the secondary level. We do wanna extensively get some of these programs at the elementary level. Uh, I, I will say, we have tried to have summer after-school programs using federal funds since I've been here. And that we have not gotten a lot of parent participation, much like summer school. Parents wanting to participate in, in after-school programs. So it's, it's not that we're not trying, it's just sometimes we don't get a lot of people to sign up, much like summer school. Is there anything else that?
I mean, just one comment I'd like to make, and I think that was to your, to your point, it's well-received. Just that, you know, this board has been and been talking about, and certainly Hump. Coming online is gonna help fill the void of a lot of connecting the dots. Because outside of just te- uh, teachers and assistant teachers, we also look at maintenance, we also look at custodial, all the people and staff in the district. And how they may be able to enhance with additional training or certification programs, whatever, so that it continues to build their value and what they're doing. And maybe even while they're working here, they will transition to having their own business or, or, you know, they may leave the district and, and go in. Just as you've mentioned earlier, if I can learn to code, I might do this. And, and I hear you, and, and, and that's the whole point, you know, we, just like the students, we want everyone to come here and continue to grow. So that they can continue to move. I mean, certainly, we have to have dedicated and, and hard-working teachers, which I know you are and all the people who have spoken here have done. But we also want to arm you with ongoing skills and learning as well. So, you know, and, and as far as like, okay, the money being available, whether it be through grants or some other type of funding. You know, certainly, we are, you know, you know, shackled in respect to the dollars that we have, we just can't appropriate. It's considered a donation and then that becomes problematic, like, you know, in a, in a legal sense. And so, we have to look outside the scope of that to see what the needs are, as you've identified. Alongside of what we're looking and considering with the student performance and modified or traditional calendar, whatever it may be. So that we can address those needs. And I agree, you know, hopefully, people will come out of this forum seeing that this is a, you know, how we've tried to do it. And, and, in the sense is that COVID has kinda shut all this down, but now we're being able to move back into that area of hearing and, and listening. And, and developing those types of, um, ways of doing things. So, um, So um, thank you very much for sharing at our, at our meeting and of course coming back and sharing with us again tonight. Uh, because I think you've uh, really hit on a lot of core points that I did see, you know, flowing through the, the uh, YouTube uh, comment section and questions and such.
Um, I wanted to address more thing that I had in there and that's teacher input. Um, it's been very difficult to communicate during COVID nineteen. Um, and um, I don't, I don't wanna uh, directly say that I could have done things differently in November and December. Um, but having an in-person meeting with the numbers that we had, it's just out of respect of the, of the dead and the people that were ill during that time. I would have loved to have done an in-person session like this, but um, like I said, it's just, it wasn't warranted during November and December where the numbers were high after Thanksgiving and Christmas. As far as teacher input, um, we had a meeting today and I talked to um, several people on the team about um, some other initiatives. And it talked about what's the better way to get input from teachers. Um, and the district P L C time is a good time to get teacher input about initiatives that are going through school. So um, I've always looked at that as academic time, that I did not want to disrupt students, I mean, teachers during that time. But it is a means, because they have them four times a year for us to talk about initiatives that are going in the district to be able to get feedback. And so I'm gonna use that time um, during district P L Cs to get information. And, and, and I, I really wanted to be peer information when I'm not there, so people can talk about certain initiatives and then bring the feedback. I like that more than the survey, I, I, I mean, the survey is very difficult, but at that time, it just wasn't another means of trying to get input from anybody else. We would love to have in-person um, information. The uh, Facebook Live information is just technology. And sometimes technology seems impersonal, but it's not to invalidate anybody's opinion. It's just that we did the best that we could do as far as communication during this time. We can all agree that we want to improve uh, student achievement. Um, and that's gonna be the focus of our, of the district and of all the educators in the district. Um, and we'll press forward that, but I, I did wanna mention that we will use district P L Cs to obtain more information for teachers to allow teachers more input. And as things get better, you know, we'll be able to have more um, input from teachers in person. It's just very difficult this time and I, I told a group of uh, of administrators, I mean, of teachers today and coaches, I said, it's just hard to communicate period during this time. It's just not the ideal time to be able to, to do things, so there's already a void in communication period. And that, I've seen it with myself, I've seen it with my board and it's, it's happening. And so I think at this time, we, we have to be uh, I would say um, empathetic towards each other about what we're trying to get done in our overall goal. Because, you know, like I told the team today, I wouldn't intentionally remove data. And, and, and the thing is, I never was pushing it as much as I, one of the focus of us doing um, improvement student achievement. And not wanting to be on the back end of, of where some of our data is going and work together to improve student achievement.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for this opportunity.
Yes ma'am, thank you for sharing. I'm, I'm sorry, Ms., Ms. Wilson, please come up. Welcome.
I'm gonna speak to you guys today as both a parent and employee.
Good mic.
I'm gonna speak as both a parent and employee. I've been to y'all district about.
I'm sorry, it's just so that everybody who's listening online and also Gary, so if you just pull it down closer to you, so make sure they can hear you as well.
Can you hear me now?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. I've been to y'all district about five years ago, I'm not originally from around here, from the Delta. So I'm gonna speak to you as both a parent and a employee. As a parent, I'm gonna say that I am highly disappointed with you. I brought four children out here in grade first, third, fifth, and um, second. When I brought them out here, my first grader, she was average, she was sweet, but she was average, she was right in her grade level. And the rest of my children were above grade level. If they have went through the schools, I have watched them steadily decline. They have not grown, you know, things that they knew that they could do, I'm seeing that they can't do it anymore. So as a parent, I'm disappointed, you know? But as a teacher, I understand why they can't do it, because I work in this school district. The teachers don't have what they need to do, what they need to do. I work in second grade and I can tell you from the K two, two standpoint, we don't have what we need to be a foundation. I mean, true, we have I R E D. In second grade, I R E D has reading classes, but K through one, it does not. So those children are sitting in K through one, listening to read alouds, their own time they read something is when they looking at mine. They come to second grade, they are expected to read text. This is their first time seeing text. So we spend our time teaching them how to decode the words in the text and how to read. So when they get to third grade, guess what they can't do? They can't comprehend. Why they can't comprehend? Cause I spent second grade teaching them how to read, because first grade didn't do it, cause they didn't have the resources to do. So I feel before we extend the school year for a whole year, we need to work on the curriculum first. Because if we go year round, we still gonna be building our house on same, because we are, we're not building the foundation. I mean, we'll be going year round and they still gonna be seventh grade year round, third grade reading level. Because we don't have what we need in the K through two. And then another thing, we don't have support. All of our curriculum people, they have taught fourth grade and up. Nobody has taught K through two, so therefore if you have never taught it, you can't tell us what to do with it. Because I have taught fifth grade, I've taught third, each one of those grades are different from K through two, I've taught first. It's different. So we need somebody in place that could come in and show us, because what you did in fourth grade is not gonna work in second grade and it definitely ain't gonna work in K through one. And I just feel if we can address those issues, then we would no longer be a failing district, we would be a, a good district. But we gotta address that first.
I wanna say I couldn't agree with you more. Um, our early literacy initiative has been very strong. I've been in collaboration with the Mississippi Department of Education, I recognized our K two issue when I first came to the district. But it was a lot of fires I had to put out, but it's been a strong focus of mine in the last year and a half. If you uh, your, your colleagues in pre-K and kindergarten have started letters training, I'm sure you know about that.
We can't do letters because of curriculum coordinator is keeping in the door, won't know why they ain't doing sex. So you can't do letters, cause sex and then letters, they are two different programs, they don't go together at all.
And, and we, we are working on um, making sure that we have a vote, a strong focus on early literacy. Changing um, uh, the way we look at um, high quality instructional materials. Um, and if there's something that you need that is curriculum oriented, related to, and it's a high quality instructional material and your principal should have reviewed that with you. We are gonna support that, so make sure that you ask, you know, if there's some support material that you need. But um, I, I agree with you, we do need a total revamp of pre-K too. And a lot of our problems in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade stem from you, a third grade teacher, a second grade teacher getting in the rat race, going to third grade. So this is a story that I've told my principals, I've told curriculum coordinators, um, figured that out. Um, and has, has started talking about it intensively last March to May, you know what I mean? And then started to focus once we got everything together for the district on working on early literacy. And so I am working intensively, and the reason why I've um, sought out the Mississippi Department of Education is because as a state, you've done well pre-K two. You know what I mean, with early literacy? I just think that Columbus as a district have not utilized the talents at M D E to be able to help us. So um, Kristen Wells is the director at the Mississippi Department of Education. I've met with her at least three or four times this year. Um, we are starting a letters training, we're gonna do some more implementation. I want her to do an outside evaluation of what you're saying, because we don't have a lot of pre-K two expertise to be able to tell us what we're need, what we need. We're also in the process of working with federal programs to get reading liaisons within it, which every school to talk to parents and community members about advocating for reading. Understanding what their child needs and what should, we should be doing to improve literacy. So I'm happy that you are so aware, it makes me excited about where we are. Because um, I, 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 I share your same sentiments about the things we have to do for early literacy and just know we're in the process of evaluating it. Um, and I also make sure and, and make sure, I don't wanna forget, this has been lengthy, that you send me an email and say that you wanna be a part of this committee when we start meeting with M D E. To talk about some of the things you're talking about, because they're my sentiments exactly. I know that a lot of our issues start pre-K. Um, I know that uh, if they don't learn how to read by second grade, then it's, it's, it's a huge responsibility on the second and third grade teacher. Um, you know, some of the things we were doing from a curriculum standpoint were dated probably a decade. You know what I mean, you know that. That we were doing things that we, they, they should have been learning more. They should have been learning more in kindergarten. And the, 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 the curriculum has to be stronger and more rigorous, we gotta know how to brain works. And we are working on some of those things and I'm sure you've seen more changes that you've seen before and it's a little bit more difficult during COVID. But we are starting to look at more high quality resources. We are looking at more things that we need to do and improve. But the, the good thing is, is that um, I'm aware and you're aware. And we know that we need to change our early literacy program and we are focused on that. And so some of the things that you talked about, and some of the things that Ms. Turner talked about, we're working on simultaneously with the, with, with the uh, with, with suggesting this modified calendar, so we're not leaving some of these things behind, we are working on them. So as we continue to ask for support from the Mississippi Department of Education, I'll definitely include you with that. But just know that early literacy is an early focus. I've told the board that we're focusing on that and we continue to try to find those expertise to help with pre-K two, because it is a whole different element. And um, I was primarily secondary, I have a lot of exposure to it, but I really wanna ask the experts at the state level to be able to help us. So help is coming, uh, continue to work hard and make sure you email me so we can start talking about what we need to do for high quality instructional materials. And really looking at some of the elements we need to do to improve, because we are in contact with um, there's a state literacy coordinator to, to make those changes. So just, just hang in there, we, we're gonna, we're gonna improve our literacy.
About the benchmark test, why do K through two have to take it in February, the last test for the year? So we still got March and April to go teach. So it's like, we're looking at half the school year at the end of the year then. You know, we take to the next test, cause we supposed to take it next, we don't know if we still gonna take it or not. But that's not the last test for the whole year, we still got two months to go.
So uh, and so the benchmark test, you're saying is a comprehensive test? Right? And, and, and the reason it's set up in case like that? Because they're supposed to look at where they are so they can prepare for the assessment from that time to the end of the year, if you follow me? And so K two is in that same regiment, because that's the way we have to prepare for the state assessment. You, you all should, you all will be taking the end of year um, I R E D test.
But I'm saying, y'all in case test, but if.
Yeah, in case, yeah.
We all take a lot, we take this in February, that's it, and I was just wondering why you did, we still got two months of teaching it up.
Okay, but y'all still taking, now y'all can still look at data from the I R E D, y'all taking the end of year I R E D test, correct?
Yeah, we.
Okay, so we just try to use that as a benchmark, but we still will continue to try and look at the data, see where they were, to look at, to look, look at um, things, standards that they have not mastered and move forward. So we do have another assessment, it's not the case assessment. Uh, the I R E D should give, be able to give its value of data to know that if they master those standards by the end of the year. Even though they're two different assessments.
But with the I R E D test, if you look at your data, with your in case and your I R E D, they're like, nice, they don't lie.
It's just.
In case, it might have a child scoring seventy-one percent, but then on I R E D, according to their standard mastery, they haven't even begun to learn the standard.
Well, I R E D is adaptive when in, and, and cases is standards based, meaning that we're, we're evaluating standards based on the pacing guide. So they are very different, but you still could be able, you still are able to look at the standards and look at mastery based on, on what, on both assessments. To see if your students have met grade level expectations. So, and, and that's something that we definitely can talk about. Um, but you know, it's another thing about, you know, over testing to, you know, give them another benchmark assessment, especially that, that early on.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson, for sharing with us. Very good information. Miss, Mr. Turner? Good evening. Good.
I'll be real brief, um, I know y'all had a long, long day. Uh, this is my second time coming before y'all, not to wreak havoc, because I don't want you to think that it's because I care about the kids. Uh, I have a daughter that graduated from Columbus High, uh, I have a daughter that's a junior at Columbus High. I'm not a sideline parent. Whether it's building the property for the Baylor Club or toting band instruments or feeding the band. Or even going to a golf game where my daughter plays golf, I'm a supportive parent and I care about my daughter and the kids at Columbus High. Some things were said at the last meeting and I don't want us to get this concept, if somebody's not totally in agreeance with these decisions. That we're going against the grain or we're not for change. I'm for change if it's the right change. If it's a type of change that has been uh, studied, it's a type of change that's gonna work. Uh, I'm not for just rushing the decision. I would say that um, the educated are for it and the non-educated are not for it. I'm a graduate of Jackson State University, I don't have a doctor's degree, but uh, I got my bachelor's from Jackson State University. And I've listened to many, many educators who are not so much against it, but they wanna know more about it. And, and that's why I'm here today. Uh, it's not, it's not now, when, I think when the research and everything has been proven that it will work. Uh, what do we have to lose? I heard that question. We have time. Time is the one thing that you can't get back. You can get money, you can get property back, but you can't get time. And like Dr. Laba said herself, no second chance, the shot clock is ticking. But if you rush the shot and miss the basket, you still lose the game. So the shot clock is ticking, but take our time and make the right decision. I'm a kind of person that's just playing, I wouldn't go by a car, nobody in this town would buy a car without even researching. You wouldn't take it after life. I haven't seen the research, I know it was talked about. Um, I would like to have a better explanation of the studies that were used to argue the twelve month school, the year round school. You know, research or studies focused on other school districts that are comparable with Columbus should be used. I emphasize that word comparable. We should include, as Ms. Turner said, demographics, the soc, socioeconomic status uh, of the citizens. And maybe even the level of qualification of the teachers that were in this study. What I'm not meaning, how many of these teachers had bachelor's degrees in these studies? How many of them had doctor's degrees? How many of them had, or specialties? All of this should be emphasized in the study, it should be made known. Just because of research demonstrated success in one school district, doesn't automatically mean we should or will have the same in another, especially Columbus. Again, there are just too many variables that need to be included in any research model or methodology. It is only fair that the studies or at least a synopsis of the files or conclusion of these studies that we're using to base this year round be presented to the public. Let us see it. If it works and we know how to work, show me, show me the money. I'm, I'm for change, I'm for bettering the students and I know we need to do better, I know we have a lot, just show it. I mean, show me how does this work? I don't think we need to rush judgment, cause this is a very important decision. And I'm repeating some of the stuff, but what is so magical about just rushing and starting it up so quick? You know, I understand we have a sense of urgency among, you know, some of the board members. But I believe that this is an instance where we should slow down, take our time, and let's do a more depth analysis of how best to proceed. Let's look at it. Is this the only thing that we can do? I mean, it's a lot of people other than Columbus City Schools facing this pandemic. It's a lot of other schools that are behind. There's some schools that have went through the same thing we are and they're eight districts. I can't think of but any one school that's Corin that's going year round. And I've worked Alcorn County and I walked the hallways of Corin High School. And that school in Columbus High are like night and day. I can tell you, I have walked that hallway. I have walked many hallways, I've been to Greenville, I've been to the city of Jackson, I've been in Biloxi. And I see these schools and I see what's working for some and what's not working for others. In short, do we have the infrastructure in place now or in six months to really start? A new year round schedule without endangering our kids emotionally or even physically? Do we even have the things in place? I listen to some of the teachers and they don't have some things, now we wanna go year round? Somebody said something about this air conditioning, do we really wanna jump the gun? We don't even have everything in place to even do it. I know a leap of faith, but when you're talking about education, the future of our kids, like I said the last time, rolling the dice, do we really wanna do that? Am I against it? Am I for it? I, I'm for anything that will work and better our kids. I, I'm for anything that will work and better our kids. I'm a parent. I've been raised. My father was an educator. Taught at New Hope High School for over twenty-eight years. He was assistant principal there. He drove the school bus. He was a dedicated, dedicated teacher. And I seen what he did to make it work for his kids. And I just don't think we need to rush judgment, jump the gun into something that's not been properly researched or hasn't been proven, the studies I've read, to work, just because we got to find out. And like I said, we can't use this, this do, we got nothing else to do. We gotta do it. We really need to think about this. And, uh, I'm not arguing that we should not move to year round school. But rather let's take a little bit more time to look deeper into the pros and cons of the whole situation. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Each one of you are in charge with a ported decision. I pray that you make the right move. And whatever we decide, like I said, and the teacher said, I'm behind the school district a hundred percent. But I just don't want to rush judgment. If I just only cared about my daughter, I probably wouldn't even be up here. Because I'm gonna make her do her work regardless. But it's other kids that I'm concerned about. Not only that, but parents, teachers. It's a lot goes into making this decision. And from my understanding, it took Corrin to while even get it up and running. And for us to just jump into it without having a lot of things lined up could be a bad thing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Turner, for sharing with us. Your concern is Dr. Laba.
I was gonna say that there's, um, there's between ten and thirty school districts that are going towards a modified calendar. I hadn't looked at national, but it's, it's starting to take away throughout the United States to mitigate, um, learning interruptions, COVID nineteen and learning loss. Uh, most of the research that I sent was primarily about modified calendars. And modified calendars is not a lot of research, but there is a lot of extensive research, um, about learning loss for students, especially, um, students, um, similar to our demographics. I also wanted to say that the Mississippi Professional Organization did a webinar with Corrin and shared it with all of their edu- educators throughout the state to promote the modified calendar as a mitigation for, um, learning loss. And so, um, I, I think that it's important to know that, that we want to be proactive, um, in, in our assessment of what we need to do to make sure we improve student achievement. And it, it's not just Corrin School District that Mississippi Professional, um, educators has, like I said, did a webinar, sent it to all their members, did that in February. And that, um, and that there are several districts, between ten and thirty districts now, that are thinking about the modified calendar throughout the state. Um, Gulfport, Petal, um, Lee County, um, and there's, there's several other districts that are, that are moving to implement. Um, and, you know, several of those super tenants, um, Stark Fields looking at it, um, are really trying to find proactive ways to mitigate what is to come. And I know I don't want everybody to be, you know, fearful, but we just don't know the predictability of the future. We want to be able to do things that are proactive to help our students, um, be successful. And I appreciate you coming and being proactive and saying that you're going to support the district and our kids, um, and whatever we decide, whatever the board decides. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for sharing, Ms. Wilson. That's everyone. Mr. Lawton?
All right, so, um, that concludes the part of the meeting this evening with respect to our online as well as our communication here. And we greatly appreciate every single person who has, uh, taken time to participate virtually or participate here in person, uh, to share their questions, their ideas. And I think one recurring theme, uh, that I saw in the comments, um, and, you know, of course I notice how meetings work is that, um, they didn't want to just hear me or Dr. Laba keep talking. Well, I've heard that before. And that's okay because that's just how the meetings work. But at the same time, it is, uh, I don't know if I should start left or right, go alphabetically. Who would like to, ask for volunteers as to who would like to share from the comments that we heard, the questions. Uh, I think it would be good for us to, to, you know, share some of the thoughts for each board member. So, um, Dr. Laba, you still have the wireless one. Uh, who would like to, uh, share first before we get down to, uh, the discussion aspect of the meeting? All right. All right, well, let's cheer the boy. We'll start over there with Mr. Sparks and we'll go this way.
Well, uh, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming and participating. And, uh, and I have several paid notes and about the comments and things like that. But there's a few things that really stuck out, um, one of which, and this is a question that I actually have for myself, um, to come up, I'll come up with myself. And that is, if we were already a high performing district, would we even be having this conversation? Anybody want to answer that? That's just a question that I have. Would we have that, would we be considering going to a modified calendar if everything was in place and we were already a high performing district? Because if we make this change, we need to get it justified, the reason for the change. And if we're already a high performing district, you're not trying to fix something that's not, that you're not going to try to fix something that's already broken. If we were a high performing district, but we're not. So now, we're all. We have to make tough decisions as a community. But we have to make them where everybody is on the same page. What I kept hearing tonight was, we're rushing. We're rushing. Slow down. Some more research. Why not? I made the comment in the last board meeting, if not now, then we. And, you know, based on what, what I got here in my notes, I don't know when. I thought I did, but evidently I don't know. Because the consensus tonight is saying, we're not against it. We're in favor of it. Just not now. Also, let's see here. Okay, yeah, here's another question. How would the calendar, the modified calendar affect dual enrollment? And I think that that's been addressed. You know, um, we're gonna have to do some things different. And we're gonna have to make some tough decisions. But I, I really, really love the fact that the community has come out and they really spoke of, um, the faculty and staff, the people on Facebook. I really appreciate the input. But now this is a challenge for all of us. We have got to get this district where it's supposed to be. It's our responsibility as a board to make sure the money and things are in place so that Dr. Laba can have the resources in which to get the teachers and everyone, you know, what that's needed, everything that's needed to get the students where they need to be. So it's bigger than just this board. It's bigger than just Dr. Laba. It's bigger than just this district. It's the entire community. We have got to work together to get this district where it's supposed to be. Because again, if we were a high performing district, I really don't think we will be having this conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're still up here. Yes. That's where everybody can hear you.
If we were a high performing district, your question is, would we be making this decision? Would we be having this conversation if we were already a high performing district? Okay. Let's look at it this way. We talk about the research all the time. And everyone is always, the research says, the research says. Right here in the state of Mississippi, we have a certain number of high performing districts. We have some high performing districts that are a lot larger than Columbus, demographics and all of that. And we have some high performing districts that are right in sync with Columbus. So whether or not we are high performing or low performing, we must look at it as if this is a decision that is in truly in the best interest of our students, children, that I refer to them as. A lot of us say students, some say kids. But what is truly in the best interest of them for the rest of their lives? Is it gonna help them from pre-K? Pre-K, pre-K teacher taught. She brought up something about letters that I haven't heard in a long time. Something that high performing districts use. So to me, if we are high performing, we can be high performing right where we are. We can't. So that shouldn't be a deterrent as to whether or not we select a modified calendar. If we are high performing or low performing, whatever we're doing in the midst of the days that we are at school, that's what should count for the better education of our children. No matter how many of those days or how they are scattered out during the school year. I did a research about two, three years ago on the high performing school districts in Mississippi. And I called them myself to find out exactly what is it that you're using that your school district is high performing compared to this school district that I'm working in, consulting in, that is not. And believe it or not, they were both using the same thing. That's why I've always said, it's the mindset of the people. And it starts with your teachers fully understanding and I'll say grabbing everything that we decide to do. Because they're the ones that is totally responsible. They're the ones that's doing the work. We make the decisions, they do the work. Parents support, children learn. That's about it for me. Thank you.
Several things tonight. Of course, I'm very grateful for all those that came and spoke and, um, participated online. This is a tough decision, as Mr. Sparks mentioned earlier. I'm definitely compelled to speak for those that don't have this platform. Um, and, you know, we all are, of course. But it's very critical, I think, that we have a clear understanding of the hearts and minds of those that are, that work for the district. And one of the things that I found very compelling as well as, um, just that seemed to be a theme, count the same things that we've talked about when I got on the board. Our teachers are still voicing the same concerns as they did, um, two years ago in prior administration. And, um, that part of the culture, I'm just not sure if we connected to close that communication gap and make sure that, um, they were embraced into this process. Um, we mentioned, you know, the community partnership. And I think in saying that, we may have, have to step back and just kind of look at, you know, that kind of begins within the CMST family as well. So if we reached out and had small meetings or what have you, did we miss the mark? You know, in making sure that those, um, our educators knew what was going to be going on. In saying that, I just, two things that come out that kind of stand out to me is adaptability and sustainability. Will our staff be able to adapt to this program, this modified calendar, I miss the program, but to this modified calendar at this time? And sustainability, um, what is the long-term implications once we've implemented it, um, and continuing the process? You know, having a teacher shortage and, um, the socioeconomic impact of our students and our teachers. We heard several teachers say they, you know, work part-time. You know, they fill the gap during the summer and our students are working. So how do we meet those needs? Well, we can, but our decision is based on the premises of those things.
Dr. Sheenley? Yeah, I, um, also appreciate everybody coming out tonight or tuning in on YouTube because we really do need that kind of input. One, one thing that I kept hearing, and I don't think there's any way to answer, is the, the need for more research. We could wait twenty, thirty, forty years to get the kind of research that I think people want. There's a, there seems to be a need, and this is totally understandable, a need for certainty. And I, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna get that anytime soon. And that is a, and that's a difficult thing to sort of wrap your head around. We're gonna have to take, whichever way that we decide to go, we're gonna be taking a risk. If we decide to go forward with the modified calendar, that's a risk. If we decide to hang on to the traditional calendar, it's also a risk. And if people are looking for certainty about how something works, well, it looks to me, it's, it's pretty certain that a traditional calendar doesn't seem to be doing the trick. Doesn't seem to be working now to the point of we, I mean, obviously, if we keep working away with our teacher, with the faculty, the staff, we can push forward with either model. And this has been an eye opener tonight for me to hear the uncertainty that's running through the people who are the, the staff who came. And I don't, I, I didn't see the, what was, what was on the smart one because I don't have a smart one. But, um, it's critical that we get the staff to buy into this either beforehand or if we decide to go forward with this, we've got to make sure that the staff understands that we're behind them, we will do everything we can to support them in this change. And that, I think that the change would be obviously in the best interest of the students. And I, I really feel like the structural change is one that is gonna either make or break the system. And I honestly, you know, don't know right now which way I, how I feel about it. But I do know that the, the research that, that people want is assurance that this is gonna work. They are not, we just, there's no way to do it. There really isn't. I mean, unless, of course, we decide we're gonna do it and then show that it can be done. Which is, if we decide to go that way, we've got to make it work. We just have to.
I have one other question. And, and we all talked about as an adult, advanced parents and employees. But was there ever anything put in place to get some feedback from the students, student body? To see if they have anything to say? Because we all know this is all about the, the student body. And, you know, I would like to know how they feel collectively. You know, um, does the vast majority, are they welcoming to it or are they, you know, dead set against it? But I would, I would also like to, you know, kind of see where they, where they come down on all of this. Because at the end of the day, if they're not buying in and the teachers aren't buying in, all of this would be in vain. But I would like to know, and the children need to know that their opinions matter. So, you know, um, if we haven't done anything, So, you know, if we haven't done anything, I don't know whether it can be done or whether it's legal or whatever the case may be. But whatever, whatever you can do to see whether or not they have an opinion or whatever that opinion is, I would, I would be interested to know how they come down on this thing.
I guess it's back to me again. Certainly, excuse me. Certainly, you know, listening to everyone speak this evening was very informative and enlightening. Definitely hearing different point, counterpoint. And, and I did hear throughout everyone, you know, whether it was some of the responses that I was reading on the, on the Facebook Live, those individuals who are here with us tonight, a commonality of them saying, we're not against it. We just wanna make sure that we've got all parts locked and conformed to what the CMSD is. You know, what the students, the teachers. And, you know, I asked the, the question a little bit early on in the sense of, okay, well, how do we know if teachers who are, you know, because there was a comment on, on the Facebook Live that we've got a teacher shortage and if you adopt this, the teacher, you know, teachers that are gonna leave the district? Well, that concerns me in the sense of not by the question, but the commitment of the teachers who might be here in the district. I mean, because whether it be this year or the next year or the next year, and as I was saying earlier, if that's the way that this involvement with the district is, that commitment level is, it's never gonna matter. Those decisions are gonna be made based upon what they want to do at that point anyway. Because the focus should be in the classroom. Now, saying all that is that I don't, you know, belittle anyone's way of logic or, or their facts that they've used to get to that conclusion. But I also, you know, hear that ongoing talk with respect to, okay, do we know that this measures up to what we have here in the CMSD? To those students we serve, the populations, the sociopie, all these different variables? And, and I'm certain that you could scour the world to look for all the research pieces you want and never find the piece that done an analysis that's gonna show you exactly the information you need to say, see, this is what I was looking for. That's just, that doesn't exist. That would exist if the CMSD were to do it and have many years down the road of study to actually construct that research for others coming after us to say, this is the research that we need to validate us with. Now, you know, in looking at all the different criteria and all the different things that we have had to, to review, all the information that Ms. Turner shared with us, all the staff that spoke, all the information Dr. Bobot has provided to us from the stakeholder meetings and such. You know, it, it, it's, it's, you know, flip the coin in certain respects. But I think an overarching theme is, okay, let's just be very deliberate in how we implement this versus just pushing the button and pulling the lever and hoping that what we want to be produced occurs. And so, you know, with, with what I look at is that, you know, we have the modified calendar, we have the traditional calendar that are, are options for us to consider. And so, you know, it's obviously the will of the board, that's why we get paid the big dollars to make these tough decisions. But the, but the big thing comes down to me is that, you know, I really believe that as we've stated at the last meeting on the eighth, you've got to have a high participation rate of students in the intercession, just like we wanna see them in summer school. You've gotta have a high petition, uh, participation rate of teachers and other staff in those same areas. And, and, and while I don't say that the buy-in is not there, I think that that level of focus and that level of, of commitment or fidelity with, with the solution that we're talking about is much greater if you give people time to kind of share and ebb and flow with how it will allow them to be, you know, part of the, of the solution versus just here it is and let's, let's move forward with it. You know, board, I mean, as far as looking at the options we have on our superintendent recommendation for be one on the agenda is consideration discussion to approve the CMSD 2021, 2022 academic calendar. And all of us should have next to us the, does everyone have a copy of calendars options? On the top is the recommended, recommended modified calendar. And then underneath that is, and Dr. Bobot, correct me if I'm wrong, is a traditional A and a traditional B option. And the differences in just between, I know we only have one for the modified, but the differences between the traditional A and traditional B looks like maybe in October, maybe some staff days being moved around in October. Ones maybe on the eleventh and the other one on B, it's maybe on the eighth. And maybe a couple of other modifications, is that correct? So as far as students being in the classroom in those different days, it looks like they're very similar throughout A or B options there for a traditional calendar. And then, of course, you go back to the front and you see the modified calendar as to if it were to be adopted, students would return to school on July the fifteenth and then go through school through June the eighth, 2020. And then, of course, the intercession breaks in late September, early October and March, right before spring break. On the traditional, it would keep a very similar format as to what has occurred in the previous years where students would come back the first of August and then go through school all the way, be out, I think on the twentieth, twentieth of May, 2022 on A and the twenty-fourth, May the twenty-fourth on B. Did I say that correctly, Dr. Bobot? Okay, so under this particular item that we have to consider, what is the will of the board? Do I have a motion for the modified calendar or the traditional calendar? And if it's traditional calendar, is it traditional calendar A or traditional calendar B? Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, before we go and make the motion, I do have a question for you, Dr. Bobot. If we vote to pass this modified calendar, do you have the support that you need to be successful? Or, yeah, to be successful with this modified calendar? From your staff and teachers and, and the law?
I'm just reading our teachers and the people that came up. First of all, I think it's a lot more frustrations than the calendar that we heard. I just think the COVID-19 crisis is just a toll on our teachers. I don't get to see them in this type of setting rarely when I visit the buildings and so. It just, just a tremendous amount of stress, you know. They, they brought up blocked schedule, the early literacy, all things that we know are things in the district that we have to deal with. I, I do, I do think any change that we, we make in the upcoming weeks are gonna be a challenge to the board. So I would just tell you to get prepared, especially as we get ready to make decisions, you know, for our students. It's just gonna be difficult. And I think one thing that resonated with me with Dr. Shoemake is that in a timeline uncertainty, people want certainty. And I understand that, you know, just any sense of normalcy. And I, and I think that's the biggest problem is we're taking the, the attempt to take away something that's somewhat normal, you, you following. And so there's a deep, deep, deep understanding with that. As, as relates to the successful, you know, and although people feel like this is rushed, we, we did start this process in November and, and did, you know, try to communicate and decentralize some of the, the information. I would say too, it's intentional that I send out research data that, that, that may be questionable. Because I, the, the important part of research is to bring out dialogue and you're never gonna have definitive research for one, one thing or another. You know, I, I do wanna focus on some of the issues with a lot of our students being three grade levels behind. And as a superintendent, I, I know that learning loss is real and that a lot of our students come to pre-K unprepared. And I, I think the most compelling statement that was made was by the pre-K teacher, I mean, the secondary teacher, who talked about some of the systematic things that we're trying to change. And so, and listening to some of the things that we need to change as a district from an academic standpoint, I just want to couple that with our kids going to school two days a week for the last year. I wanna couple that with the social emotional learning that we're dealing with. I wanna couple that with the uncertainty that we may be in this situation till next December. And, and that's the reason why during the first meeting, and I don't want people to feel like we rushed, it's just sometimes people don't see the crisis until afterwards, right? And, you know, one thing that a parent said at the last meeting is we were in crisis before Dr. Bobot came, and that's very much true. Is it frightening to me where we will be? Yes and no. Yes in that when I talk about the shot clock, it's gonna impact forty to fifty kids a year. That potential will be dropped out, that's the average amount of students that we have drop out every year. Am I worried about the SEL? Yes. Am I worried about the emotional welfare of the teachers and employees? Absolutely. And I just don't wanna be on the back end of mitigating this or I don't wanna be in this room talking about test scores next year and what's happening. And us having opportunity to do something that's, that's, that can mitigate the situation, will mitigate the situation. Even if we didn't have intercessions, our students getting more, a more balanced schedule and ready available instruction during the year will help close the achievement gap. That is research-based, you know, a lot of people wanted research about the modified calendar, there's not a lot out there. And like in Dr. Shoemake's research, you're never gonna find anything with, with conclusive answers for anything. It's just not how research work. You know, a lot of that was informative into the create dialogue and discussion. But, you know, in, in part to what Dr. Shoemake has said, there's not anything that's gonna give any power of uncertainty. And I also wanna say, there's things that we do day to day that are instructional based, that have resistance, that, that are normal. This is the normal process for me all the time that, you know, sometimes people don't like things and sometimes they do. And, you know, we, we just do the best we can. It's more important, you know, our, our next big thing is bringing the kids back and I just tell you all to get ready, you know? It's gonna be an issue, you know? But, you know, overall, as a superintendent, we wanna do what's in the best interest of students. As a superintendent, I don't wanna be on the back end of this. I don't want us to be on the back end of that, say, especially not the kids. And I feel that, that our students will, will like the change. And either way we go, we're gonna work with our teachers to work towards closing the achieving gap. I just think the time element and the kids that'll be impacted long-term, especially as I look at the kids in sixth, seventh and eighth grade that, that are three years behind. That was a very hard meeting on Wednesday, you know, to look at that and know that, you know, they're going to school two days a week and know that those kids are potentially gonna be dropouts. And, and being in this situation for another year and a half with learning eruptions, we just don't, that's a lot of uncertainty. I think being able to give kids remediation, credit recovery during intercession is important. I think it's a better way of improving the achievement gap during the year as opposed to waiting until the summer. And it's really hard to get gains in the summer with summer school if their participation is not high. I know Mr., Mr. Speaker's brought up participation. I do feel with us doing a, a rough intercession for the hundred students in high school is indicative of how we can get more students to be a part of this. But we have to understand also that if, even if we don't have students to attend intercession, them just getting more readily, more instruction, more regularly in the balanced calendar will be effective means of closing the achievement gap for our students. So these are tough decisions, you know, it's very difficult for some of our teachers. And, you know, I've talked to teachers that absolutely love it. And, you know, I mean, that, that, that they're looking forward for and like having a break, you know, every month of the year. But I think the most important thing right now as a superintendent and, and I feel our team is that we, we are really worried about our students, you know? Ms. Turner talked about that, other teachers talked about that. And I just see these, these issues progressing and we're really working on trying to meet the social emotional needs as we, as we make some adjustments. Because either way we go, we just have a long road ahead. It's just a determination of trying to get out this thing in three to five years or five to seven years and, and looking at some things that we can do to mitigate. And it's just gonna be tough, it's tough times. And I have nothing but empathy and respect for the people that came here and, and the work that they do every day, so.
It just occurred to me that we didn't, we haven't heard about how the principals feel. So I was wondering if you could sort of give us an idea if they're on board and, you know, how they feel about it?
We have a, both a elementary and two elementary, two elementary principals and one secondary principal's on, on the committee. And they were responsible for discussing and, and choosing and disseminating the information with other principals. They meet with me and then they meet with the, each other. They met with teachers and discussed this information. And I feel that our, our principals are on board, especially because of the academic side of it. And I think too, they got a lot of data today from iReady. And I think, you know, looking at those, those three year behind is just really tough. Because making those kind of gains, especially in middle school before they get to the high school, it's just, it's just gonna be tough either way. It's gonna be tough to get those kids and we, you know, our eighty day has gone down about four percent. And even though we've been held harmless, the attendance rate has been tough. And most of our students went to school this week, a lot of them didn't. And, and, you know, we just, we're just in a continuous cycle that kids are not getting regular instruction. And it's just, you know, daunting task academically, but we will persevere. But I wanna get back to what Dr. Shoemake has said, that, you know, there's nothing that's gonna be certain. But I, I know that even if we don't have intercessing, intercession, them receiving more rigorous instruction will help close the achievement gap. And it will also especially help with some of our pre-K students, pre-K to second grade students that come to school unprepared. And we can help them get, mitigate that instead of waiting to the end of the year to do that, to work with those, those younger students. So I will be well.
Ms. Young, Ms. Cox, would you have anything you'd like to share? Okay, so what is the will of the board? Do I have a motion? Do we have to adopt one calendar or the other? So do I have a motion to adopt the modified calendar for the 2021, 2022 year? Do I have a motion to adopt calendar? So we have a motion by Dr. Shoemake to adopt the modified calendar. Do I have a second? It's been suggested by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please signify with the right hand. It's the only one, it's, it's, we have modified and then we have A, we have B, that's traditional. All right, so we have a motion and we have a second to adopt the modified calendar for the 2021, 2022 school year. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify with the right hand. All opposed? It does fail. So we now have the modified, or we have traditional A and traditional B. And for traditional A, students would come back to school on August the fifth and be out of school on May the twenty-second, I mean, sorry, May the twentieth. On B, students would come back on August the sixth and get out of school on May the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. So do I have a motion to adopt traditional calendar A? It's been motioned by Ms. Cox. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Second for discussion, Dr. Schumake. Yes. It looks like in, on B, there's a student, I mean, I'm sorry, a teacher day that is, I'm looking at that right, the purple?
Yeah, that was our professional.
That's professional belt day on the eighth, and then they would get a holiday on the eleventh, on B. But on A, they would only get the eleventh, because the teacher day would be on the holiday. That's correct. On B. On A, they would get out on the seventeenth. Okay. So right now, the motion and the second is for, is for A. And so, we, it can either be voted up or down, or consideration, or if there's a, a change in consideration based on that additional information, that B would be a, a more, uh, realistic, you know, I would say realistic, but a more, uh, accommodative schedule, then the motion and the second can be rescinded, and then it could be considered again. But it's up to Dr. Schumake and Ms. Cox if you wanna rescind your motion and second. Okay, so the motion and the second has been rescinded by Ms. Cox and, um, Dr. Schumake. So now, we have traditional calendar B, uh, as we discussed there. So do I have a motion to approve traditional calendar B? It's been motioned by Ms. Young. Do I have a second? It's been seconded by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please signify with the right hand. It is unanimous. Now we go to the next item, which is the last item on today's agenda from February the eighth. And, um, and I'll just pose this question, uh, because I know there was emails and correspondence about people worried about not being able to come out tonight, but I think we had really good participation here in person, and I know we had at least times, people, hundred fifty to hundred sixty people participating online that were not here. Uh, maybe some were here sharing, but the point is, I think we had a really good audience for this discussion and very fluid dialogue. So I think that we should probably just adjourn the meeting, decisions that have been made, and, and march on into March. So, march on into March. So, do I have a motion to adjourn? It's been motioned by Mr. Sparks. Can I get a second? Second by Ms. Young? Do y'all really have more discussion? All right. So all in favor, please signify with the right hand.